So, good evening and welcome everyone to the December 6th meeting of the Chapua Board of Education. The board has had a work session today for the first time since we can all remember, and it lasted about ninety minutes and we had some productive discussion. We are now going to convene the public meeting, so may I have a motion to do so?
I move that we convene the public meeting at 7:41.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jeffrey Nessler.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so being that we are in between Thanksgiving and winter holidays, I just want to wish everyone a very happy and healthy holiday season. And we have a great way to celebrate today and mark the celebratory occasion. We have two musical groups. The first is the ninth grade student quartet, which will be introduced by Kathleen Feldman, and they will be performing for us today followed by the Horace Greeley Acapella Group.
Thank you so much for having us, the ninth grade string quartet made up of Zoria Guerra, Kaden Swetl, Leonel Lu, and Thomas Yee. They'll be performing a piece by Shostakovich, a Waltz Number Two from Sweet Four Variety Orchestra, and it was arranged for string quartet by Leonel Lu.
Wow!
So even more special to him. (applause)
Thank you so much, that was so wonderful, so well done.
Really excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Quaker Notes, a Greeley Acapella Group, who will be introduced by Chloe Findling, one of our seniors.
Thank you Kathleen.
Hi, Chloe, I'm the leader here for the chorus. And we're going to be performing two of the songs from our set for our theme concert, which we haven't been doing yet, but this is Hannah, Maddie, Lucy, Love, Ava, Lily, Melody, Lauren, and Sophie. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group.
Thank you so much, that was so wonderful, so well done.
Really excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Quaker Notes, a Greeley Acapella Group, who will be introduced by Chloe Findling, one of our seniors. Thank you Kathleen.
Hi, Chloe, I'm the leader here for the chorus. And we're going to be performing two of the songs from our set for our theme concert, which we haven't been doing yet, but this is Hannah, Maddie, Lucy, Love, Ava, Lily, Melody, Lauren, and Sophie. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group.
Thank you so much, that was so wonderful, so well done.
Really excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Quaker Notes, a Greeley Acapella Group, who will be introduced by Chloe Findling, one of our seniors.
Thank you Kathleen.
Hi, Chloe, I'm the leader here for the chorus. And we're going to be performing two of the songs from our set for our theme concert, which we haven't been doing yet, but this is Hannah, Maddie, Lucy, Love, Ava, Lily, Melody, Lauren, and Sophie. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group.
Thank you so much, that was so wonderful, so well done.
Really excellent.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. And now I'd like to introduce the Quaker Notes, a Greeley Acapella Group, who will be introduced by Chloe Findling, one of our seniors.
Thank you Kathleen.
Hi, Chloe, I'm the leader here for the chorus. And we're going to be performing two of the songs from our set for our theme concert, which we haven't been doing yet, but this is Hannah, Maddie, Lucy, Love, Ava, Lily, Melody, Lauren, and Sophie. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group. And our first song is "I Have Nothing" by Lyndon Houston, and our second song is "Unwritten" by Natasha Benfield, both were arranged by the group.
Thank you. Thank you so much, that was amazing, thank you.
Thank you girls, thank you.
Excellent, thank you.
You should start every meeting like that.
And now Jim's going to say.
I know, Jim, come on, he's next. Jim's got a job in mind.
Jim and Tom.
I know, I did that on purpose.
Well, we had music, we had singing, you need to dance, so get ready.
Okay, alright.
Makes my pledge of allegiance look like...
That was great.
You tried to sing the pledge of allegiance.
Christine Superintendent's report.
So, yes, I think in the interest of time, I'd like to defer the superintendent's report until after our presentations tonight, because I know we have our West Orchard Elementary School principal and his team here, because they're our highlighted school this evening, and we also have our interactive reports, so I'll defer and I'll go after interactive. Is that okay?
Yes.
So, Mr. Scoog, you're up. But I just want to, while we're getting ready, I mean those two groups were just amazing.
Fantastic.
So, I'm so appreciative of the high school for performing tonight for us. I asked Robert to ask some of our students to come out, and I know it's difficult to do that on a school night, but I thought that that was just exceptional, and I've been able to have the opportunity to attend two musicals so far and a variety of concerts, and it's just, tonight is just another indication of how our stronger performing arts program here is in this district, we're very fortunate, so.
Okay, thank you Christine. Alright everyone, try to stay awake for this one. We have fifty-two slides, but we're going to go fast. Board of Education, District Administration, thank you for being here tonight. We're going to talk about innovative teaching and learning at West Orchard School. And before doing so, I want to introduce the team.
Hi, I'm Sarah Curry, the new art teacher at West Orchard.
I'm Erin Posner, fourth grade teacher at West Orchard.
Hello, Tom Williams, phys ed teacher at West Orchard.
So tonight, we are going to focus on three areas are part of our goals in this year and in the coming years, innovative learning spaces, which for the last few years, we've been working on making available to students and finally have two nice spaces in the school so far. We also have a Makerspace, and we're also going to talk about some design thinking projects that students have been doing. So this is the, going back in time, you know, everything in education comes full circle. So nineteen seventy-one, West Orchard opened its doors, and this is the pamphlet that I found in an archive in my office. So, West Orchard then and now, we'll just go take a little tour back in history. So these are the, this is a bi-fold, and this language in blue is, was lifted from the bi-fold. So as teachers, we are facilitators who foster student learning, we should provide freedom of space, time, and choice to encourage individual learning and growth, and learning is an active process. So if you look at our board strategic question and our goals as a district and school, all this, these words kind of really pop out, and this is back in seventy-one. So, students have individual plans, they have control of their own time and choices and ownership of their learning, the curriculum is personalized, and students work at their own ability level. Interest centers, which we now have, Makerspace, and a vertical sequence of skills, we have an articulated curriculum in each of the content areas. So again, many years ago, we're still, we're kind of doing the same things in a different way. Interdisciplinary projects, reading, writing, and math, make learning more engaging and relevant. So all this language in blue was popped out of the pamphlet, I just thought that was interesting.
I have the same children picture from four...
Yes. So that was kind of neat to see. So, West Orchard two thousand seventeen, the school was built back in seventy-one with the open school concept, so a lot of the walls at West Orchard are accordion style, so they can be opened up and you can adjoin classrooms. There are doors that go in between classrooms, so teachers and students can collaborate. So in terms of where we are in our twenty-first century learning spaces and innovative learning spaces, West Orchard, the infrastructure and the footprint is perfect for what we're moving into in terms of creating spaces for students. So, the concept of build it and they will come is something that I've been working on for the last few years, and because of declining enrollment, we've been able to create some common areas across the school. So traditional learning spaces are immobile, they're structured, very structured and defined and limiting, whereas active learning spaces are flexible and mobile, you can move furniture around, you can configure groups in different ways and have different configurations of furniture and learning spaces. So this is a picture, a schematic of our second grade commons, which is a new learning space we created, and this is the same furniture reconfigured in two different ways. This is the actual space itself today. Our second graders in this picture are sharing their imaginary communities that they designed, and they needed large table spaces to do that. You'll notice that we have some soft seating, we have stools, those tables have wheels and the chairs have wheels, so kids are wheeling themselves around a little too much, but we're working on that, they'll get that out of their system. But we have monitor, display monitors on two walls and a large one on the back wall, and we have two small learning nooks that you can see there. So students needed large table spaces to create these imaginary maps that they designed through a mapping unit. These are some third graders working on an advertisement video pitch that they were creating using laptops. This is a fourth grade group doing some research, and again, notice the flexibility of the space, the soft seating, the kids are relaxed. You know, back in seventy-one, I could imagine they had the hardback wooden chairs with the inkwells in the desks, you know, the whole, so we've come a long way, not quite inkwells, but...
Yeah. We have...
Thank you, Jeffrey.
These are our first graders sharing their how-to pieces with students from other classes. So it's a very flexible space up in second grade commons, and it's basically two classrooms that we were able to take the wall down in between and create that space. So now we're down into fourth grade de commons, and this is made available through the Chapua School Foundation. This is some soft seating in our fourth grade commons, so again, you know, they're small tables, kids can relax, sit in groups. The flexible seating, those tables come apart and you can configure tables in different ways. We have mobile whiteboards, soft ottoman seating. So these are some fourth graders doing some work in that space, notice that they're making themselves comfortable. The tables again are on wheels, so they can be reconfigured in the back, on the left side of that photo, in the back there, there's a digital display that teachers and students can wirelessly share their work. Ideation on a lot of the whiteboard spaces that we have down there. Tables configured again in different ways, students spreading out, very engaging space for students and teachers. Students are sharing, sharing their work, sharing their ideas. I'm going to turn it over to Sarah, who's been pivotal along with our librarian in creating a Makerspace for students and providing them experiences in there.
So yes, I'm one of the facilitators in our Makerspace, and just to give you the purpose and rationale, so to provide an active learning environment where students are encouraged to collaboratively problem solve concepts and ideas in order to make sense of the world around them. And teachers are encouraged to facilitate this learning and discovery through supported exploration feedback and questioning. So basically the idea behind Maker is the philosophy of problem solving through tinkering, play, and exploration, and while they're doing these things, tinkering, playing, and exploring, they're able to learn these dispositional skills listed up here. Collaboration, creativity, imagination, perseverance, courage, curiosity, adaptability, self-awareness, and passion, which is also known as the habitudes, which some of our students are very familiar with. So another big idea in the Makerspace is this idea of, you know, interdisciplinary learning or cross-curriculum integration. And here, this is a lesson that I actually did with first graders as their introductory lesson into the Makerspace, and this integrated math, art, and architecture. So the top middle picture is an artwork by Paul Clay, it's a famous artwork, and each table received this artwork, and I asked them to turn and talk, what do you notice, what do you recognize, what do you see? And through turning and talking, they come to the discovery of there are many shapes, there are many colors, it looks like he arranged the shapes to make buildings or even a city. So from this, we move on to working independently and in a very open-ended way. I presented them and I said, here are pattern blocks, you're going to be creating your own building or part of a city. Think about how you can use this everyday math manipulative to create something different in a different way, using the geometric shapes, and this partnered with the first grade curriculum where they're learning about the geometric shapes. So they worked alone, and then after they worked alone for a while, I had them turn and talk, what do you notice about your partner, why don't you turn and talk, what were some things that were really successful, that you really love about your building or your structure? What are some things that you struggled with, what are some things you would revise or change? So from this, we had students saying, well, maybe next time I wouldn't make it so tall because they were falling over onto the floor, or maybe I would make it a little more sturdy. So from this, I had them pair up in those partnerships or as a table and create their own city. So, no, sorry, one quick thing. So through this, the children were able to use divergent thinking and creativity, and it was so interesting to see how some students worked that in a two-dimensional way, and other students were turning the blocks on their side or stacking and working three-dimensionally. So on the next slide, I have an example, this is a group that worked to create their own city, and there was really no instruction on what exactly to do, it was super open-ended, and just to see what this group of first graders created in October is amazing, so pay attention to the structures that they built and what they're explaining.
So tell me what you guys are making.
We're making the New York City with parks and bridges and a town.
And a town, and Jack, what are you working on?
The amusement park.
The amusement park, Victorian gardens.
With gardens?
Victorian gardens.
Oh, Victorian gardens. And tell me about yours, Justin.
I'm making a bridge.
A bridge, ah, and tell me about yours, Ria.
I'm making the cities and houses.
I see.
A world you meant.
Whoa.
Brooklyn.
Brooklyn, you're adding Brooklyn?
No, it's Central Park and New...
Oh, Central Park.
Yeah, Manhattan.
Gotcha.
So this is just interesting to see what they associated with the city, naturally that's our closest city, but having them use an everyday math manipulative to create, you know, their own city, we had children working, they created patterns and they created museums, and then another, in the same group, created another museum, but it was far enough because in a city, museums are not next to each other, they're a couple of blocks apart. So here we have a couple of examples of different Maker experiences going on in the Makerspace. So in the bottom left, there's a child putting a coffee filter into water with marker on it, and this is a very basic exploration of chromatography, which is seeing how colors can travel and be separated on a coffee filter. We have, in third grade on the bottom middle, this is another example of cross-curriculum integration, where this is from their science unit, they learn about the water cycle, and at the end, to kind of reinforce all the different topics and content that they've learned, they're creating their own water filtration systems. So that's very exciting. And in fourth grade, the top pictures, we have Shark Tank, which Erin will be speaking about, and also on the top right, the students are working on creating an obstacle course within realistic parameters to accomplish various tasks that will actually be attainable in their PE class, and Tom will touch on that also. And first and second grade are working on literacy-based projects where they're actually recreating or creating a part of... recreating or creating a part of a book that they read. One of the things that I have created as part of the Makerspace team is this newsletter. And this is just a really fun and colorful way to inform our colleagues what is going on. So, it's what is going on, what are other grade levels doing? I send it out monthly, and I've been sending also ideas for Maker experiences that the teachers can take part in on their own to be excited about. And also, on the bottom, there's a section to remind and encourage teachers to sign up for the Makerspace. So, the feedback around the newsletter has been super positive, so I look forward to continuing to do that and sending that out. Thank you.
Thanks, Sarah.
Well, I think a nice transition before going into my project is just to say that a bonus that I didn't realize would happen with this work is getting to collaborate with Sarah and Ellen Moskowitz. Mrs. Elwin has been a great help, and I must tell you, having Mr. Scoop to cut sheet metal has been very, very helpful. But just to, for the students to also get to see their principal and teachers and different role in the Makerspace, yeah, again, an added bonus. So, I first want to tell you a little bit of how I got to Shark Tank and Makerspace active learning projects, and that came from Habitudes. During the 2015-16 school year, Allison Guerra led a faculty book group. And the second book that we selected was Classroom Habitudes. When Allison passed away in February of 2016, my class started to incorporate Habitudes, and it was a therapeutic way to keep her with us. And that launched my love for Habitudes even more, and my work has grown over the past two years. So, that following school year, I started to take each of the Habitudes there, or the dispositions that Sarah discussed earlier, and pop out a different hands-on, interactive project to help them better understand the benefits and the importance of each, not just as fourth graders, but for life. And as the district moved toward Makerspace and project-based learning, it just seemed such a natural fit. So, this year was the second Shark Tank. You turn to the next slide and I'll talk about it. Oh, and with our district building goals, we really followed the design process, but naturally, other phases kind of came out. But that was really the point from which we drew the process from. So, Imagination Tank or Shark Tank is very much like the show, but it's an opportunity for students. So, this was to explore imagination, but naturally, all the Habitudes come out through this type of work. It was an opportunity for the students to come up with an idea, whether it's a business, whether it's changing a law, just some idea of something that they wish existed in the world, and to see it all the way through over a number of weeks and end up before a panel of three sharks. So, the five-phase process, I'll take you through each one one at a time. So, brainstorming, I asked them to explore, "Where will my imagination lead me? What am I passionate about? I feel happiest when? The thing missing from this world?" And it was just an opportunity for first students to work on their own and think. And then in my class, we have positive partner partners, which is a partnership where each person has, partners have made a commitment to work well and to see the best in one another, so they could choose to also then brainstorm and work with their partner. And Sarah actually got to come and help in this process with me, so she saw it through all the different phases, and we had great conversations. And it's actually, we need to talk more about reflecting on where their product started and what it ended up turning into. So, the next process was planning feedback, and as Jim mentioned, the great innovative spaces that we have, when we were working out in the commons, we were able to arrange the furniture like we were business people in focus groups. And we would, I call it shark spotlight. And one student or partnership would present their product or their idea before having made it, and then the rest of the class gave them feedback on why, and they pushed their thinking and they challenged them. And our winners, actually, if you go back to where they were at this phase, their product was totally different. And that day, when we were out there doing our focus group, completely changed their product, and that's when they made their change and they ended up winning. You'll get to see what their product was. So, using the Makerspace, just, you should also know that their faces were lit up every day. They were so eager and excited, couldn't wait. They planned at home, they planned at school, and it just, it's fun, it's disguised as fun, but they're learning so, so much. The different materials that they got to experiment, we got great new tools, like our beautiful cardboard cutter. We had very minimal injuries throughout the process. And again, Jim handled our sheet metal. But in this, I have building, creating, making there, but it was really rebuilding, recreating, remaking, because as they tried different things, there were so many failures. But those failures, again, we have that view now, failing is not failing, but only a way to discover how to make your work better. So, the final presentation, most had a Google slideshow, but what really wowed me was that some, without even our knowing, had scratch demonstrations of how their product worked. So, they used coding, others did commercials, some built their own website. So, they really, this was even different from last year, you know, depending on what the kids bring as well. You can provide all the materials, but they, the students themselves are incredible resources, so that it will be different, I know, every time we do it. So, those are our three sharks in the middle. It consisted of two parents in the business world, and Annie Piekarski was, for the second year, one of our sharks. And it's just a very nice way to give them their first public speaking, because as we all are witnessing right now, in your lifetime, you will have opportunities where you need to be in front of a panel and show that you're worthy of their time. So, it's a wonderful opportunity. Also, again, using the C Commons was their forum with the sharks, and they had the big screens that were there, so it was a very unique opportunity for them that I know that they're going to remember. Here is one of our products. This is a pencil fiddler that Zoe and Julia made. Since fidget spinners were banned in our school, they were trying to find a small way where they could fiddle, but yet not have their teachers frustrated.
This one's my favorite.
Would you like to talk about the dropper stopper?
This is the dropper stopper. So, Jenna and Clara, for your ice cream cone, when it starts to melt, you know, to stop the drops, they created something that catches the ice cream drops from the dropper stopper. And this is their business card. She actually put her email and phone number on there, so I could go. I don't want them to take, get too many orders early on.
And this year, we actually had two in costumes. So, Jenna was in costume, and we also had a reindeer, because Daniel's product, Daniel and Jake created a deer repellent flower called the Smart Flower, and so one of them dressed up as a deer. This is our winner this year. This was Ezra and Alex, and they created the Fit Bottle, which is a weighted water bottle, so that every time you take a sip, you're actually getting stronger. But to talk about, I can just talk about how it grew. Originally, their idea consisted of adding weights without your children knowing, so that you were helping them to build their muscles. And in the focus group, the children said, the other students said, "They didn't like the idea of parents being sneaky. Why can't you have a product where they know what it's for and make it positive?"
And the real-world issue that they were dealing with was obesity. So, one of the things that we spoke to them about is thinking about real-world issues, what can you do to help that issue or solve that issue?
So, these are some short reflections of their process.
What were the challenges that you faced during the Shark Tank process?
Probably the feedback, because when you presented to them our classmates, they would give you feedback, and you would have to kind of maybe remake that part of your product or add more to your presentation.
Henry, what was the most important phase of Shark Tank?
Well, I'd say there were two of them, brainstorming and building, because you have to brainstorm a really creative and good idea, and then you have to make that idea come to life.
I was really proud of their reflections on the experience, so here's some of them. "Shark Tank helped me understand the power of imagination and that your imagination can change the world. I understand the power of getting a good idea and the ability to create something from scratch. We had to think of an idea, fix problems, and create it with a lot of trial and error along the way. In my opinion, feedback was the most important step, because it made us push ourselves harder and think really deeply." We even had one group who had a really hard time coming up with an idea, and in their presentation, they actually thanked the group and said, "If it wasn't for you guys, you know, we don't know where you'd be." And we did not tell them to say that, so they were very mature. Also, another thing that we're just working on throughout, I know it's not a habitu, but naturally kindness is something in the Chapakua District that we're bringing in. And we talked about just being happy for one another, so when there was going to be an actual winner, making sure that you were happy for that person. So, I guess the last thing I could say about it was just that it left them wanting more, so I'm very excited to continue with these type of projects for the other Habitudes throughout the year.
Thank you. This is our first year in physical education in my curriculum that I'm taking on, project-based learning. The goal of it was to give students a greater understanding of what they could do outside of the typical sports that we have in this country, to keep fitness in their lives, and to give them an avenue outside of the school district and outside of those regular sports of what they can do independently. So, in designing this, having them design their own obstacle course, I'm hoping that they will be better at making decisions about their fitness and their activity and play time, and to take on more responsibility for it themselves. Also, within the system of creating and designing, going into the Makerspace, and then that gives them hands-on training to create models of what they're looking to design and run through in an obstacle course. You know, the question's up there, to have students design, or the goal was to have students design their own obstacle course with certain parts of fitness that we try to encourage. One was strength, flexibility, cardiovascular. And also, one of the goals for the students was just to be creative and have a fun obstacle course, because that's what's going to keep them engaged and coming back. So, eventually, someday, they will present this, perhaps to another class, and that's in the works. I didn't bring a sign-up sheet tonight, but if any of you are willing, just before we get to that. So, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead and tell you, this is our obstacle course that I presented the students with, just a little bit of forward, that this was after a gymnastics-based unit.
So, good evening and welcome, everyone, to the December sixth meeting of the Chapakua Board of Education. The board has had a work session today for the first time since we can all remember, and it lasted about ninety minutes, and we had some productive discussion. We are now going to convene the public meeting, so may I have a motion to do so?
I move that we convene the public meeting at seven forty-one.
A second. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Please stand for the pledge of allegiance led by Jeffrey Nussbaum.
I pledge allegiance to the Chapakua Makerspace. They did the ball. Instead of breaking down skills individually, add links together and create a larger base for them. The ropes, the girls that were swinging on the ropes, what you don't see in that is that they have to look up the ceiling and make sure that their rope is lined up with the beam on the ceiling, so they're going to swing straight. So, there's physics involved in all of this. They had to get themselves up on that rope high enough to get over that red mat, which is our volcano, and then across the green mat, which is our swamp, and land safely. Then they had to have their partners swing on the next rope, so they had to work together with their partners to get them back home safe. On the sled pull, we talk about grit sometimes, building grit with our students and having them challenge and make it through a math problem, or make it, you know, encourage them to write for longer periods. You know, when you're faced with pulling that sled across the floor and getting it there independently, suddenly that rope isn't quite so short, and then you have to physically move the sled back. They had to work together as a team to get it back. The timing and the physics involved with swinging on the rings, we had to discuss whether the students should swing and let go, when to let go of the ball, when your momentum is carrying you forward, at the peak of it, when you stop, or on the backswing. So, depending on their velocity, when they're moving, and what they want that ball to do to get to land in that ring, they had to think that all out before they dropped the ball. The other students that were on the scooters towing themselves along, we had to set up an anchor system for that to work. The ropes had to be taught, and the students had to realize and help each other out partner-wise to keep those ropes taut, so the other student could pull on the scooter without waving all over the place. We then gave the students the opportunities, after viewing this, to move into the Makerspace and create a model that was based on what we did in gym class. In the future, we'd like to, you know, as the units go on, we'd like them to add more to their obstacle courses and challenges. And then here we had, I asked Sarah to help me out and go into the Makerspace, because her ability to come up with final products as an art teacher was something I did not have experience in, and so she helped me out with the materials, how the students would utilize the materials, so we collaborated on that. I gave the students the basic goals, but then Sarah was able to fine-tune it and have the students work with the various things. If you could speak about having me at the...
So, Tom came to me with this awesome idea, and we were trying to figure out, how can we get a PE situation into the Makerspace? And we were, you know, thinking, how can we do this on a smaller scale and almost have them create a model of what a great obstacle course would be? So, Tom brought in a bunch of equipment into the Makerspace, and we lined it in the front of the rooms, and we told the students that they had the opportunity to go and explore the materials. How does this equipment work? What can you do with it? Then, we, through talking and collaborating, came up with a couple of different materials, and we created this tray. There was felt on the tray, pipe cleaners, pom-poms, wood blocks, a bunch of different things. And when we presented them the tray, I had said, you know, "If you wanted to create a hula hoop, or you want to use a ball in your obstacle course, what are some of these smaller-scale materials that you could use?" And they said, "Oh, well, you could take a pipe cleaner and bend it to create a hula hoop." We actually had, one of the really cool things that we saw was, a kid created a trampoline with, he used a pipe cleaner to make a circle, and then used yarn and started tying it, wrapping it around to make it into a trampoline. They were cutting the felt and making mats out of the felt, and it was just so interesting to see without much guidance and with the super open-ended prompt, to see what they were able to do with these different materials.
Yes, they also kept safety in mind, underneath all the ropes and rings and high things that they want people to jump off of, they did have a mat underneath it, so that was good on their part.
So, this is...
This is one of our students explaining, again, this was only in half an hour's worth of work, that they had this opportunity to create, and some of our students collaborated on this to do the following.
You have to go zigzag through the cones, and then you have to swing on the bullring, then you go through these, and climb on the climbing wall, then you go...
Where it's magnetic, so stay on.
Then your jump goes right...
It's magnetic, so...
No, then you climb up there, you jump here, then you jump here. There'll be bowling balls coming, you have to dodge them, and then you jump out of there. Then you climb up and jump, and you have to do...
I forgot to mention to the students that there were no superpowers and/or force shields involved in the ability to complete the course. But as you can see, when the magnetic wall keeps falling over, one of the boys put a block right behind it to help them out. That was an immediate fix. But the students, you know, again, when they're creating these things, we see this on television with the variety of shows, I'm sorry, does the, American Ninja Warrior is a common obstacle course show. There are other games on ESPN called CrossFit Games, where, you know, there's sled pushing, there's Olympic lifting, other fitness venues besides just your typical sports that we think of in this country as four major sports. So, I just wanted to give the students outlets and let them realize in elementary school that there are outlets for this, not just Newcastle Rec Department, but other gymnasiums where these things can occur and are occurring. And I've seen a student with a Spartan Race shirt on, so I know his parents are involved in it. And so, there's other outlets for these students to be physically fit and ways to construct it, and who knows what that will lead to for some of these students in the construction process beyond the fitness process and shaping their thinking. So, the goal, again, is to have another party or another group of students run through the course, and then they'll provide these students with feedback as to likes, dislikes, how to improve, and move forward.
And that is the end of our presentation.
Tom, it's your question.
You can come by and try out the course if you want.
I don't know when you got into sheet metal cutting. That's a whole other question.
I had to help him with the build this robot.
There you go. Well, see you need fill a need. We talk a lot about resilience, and obviously, in a fun and engaging activity like this, where there's no grades involved or anything like that, if something falls and you get it back up and you do it again, do you find that skill transferring to the more frustrating tasks of doing math, or reading a book that's challenging you to look upwards, or writing for longer periods of time? Do you find them digging deep to use those skills that they're getting out of this? Do you find them digging deep to use those skills that they're getting out of this in, uh, other more traditional, uh, learning experiences?
I, I definitely do and I, I think there's more to go this year, but, um, in discussing my own APPR work with, um, Mr. Scoog this year and talking about the particular bunch of students that I have, um, I felt that they needed growth in this area. And, um, the example I can refer to is I always incorporate Jeopardy as an end of the unit game. And the first time I had Jeopardy this year, it started out amazing, it was competitive, it was exciting. And then when someone was about to win, uh, you could just see the faces where they were about to, to break down. And, you know, we discussed how in life there are going to be times where everyone's not going to win. Sometimes someone else is going to get the question right, you might make a mistake. And, um, before launching Shark Tank, I sat them down and I reminded them of this experience that we had. And I said, let me explain to you what's going to happen if we do this. And if we all come with the same mindset, i- it's not going to be a positive experience for us all. Um, so we kind of made this pledge together and talking about the habitudes and what they are and why they are. It, it was great if, you know, in the room there wasn't a single soul who was disappointed, there wasn't, you know, anyone who said, oh, if I had done this better, then I could have been the one. So they really were very flexible and, um, I am finding that it is working in the classroom, but again, long way to go. Yes, um, math is a different story. Uh, but now I have also a reference point, so I can say, you know when in Shark Tank you experienced this? This is like this, but this is math, so give yourself time, try to look at it from another way. What, how can we problem solve? So I think there are tremendous benefits that can be correlated back into the academics.
And how much time out of your day or out of your week are you devoting to this? And I, it's a terrible question, what are you giving up or do you feel like you're not giving anything up?
So it's an interesting discussion with, with my colleagues of why they either are or are choosing not to do some of, of the work that I'm doing. And I think the benefit is, I, I'm still doing the same writing, the reading, the math, the science and the social studies. I think one of the things that is motivating them is they're so excited to do this work because they know we've reserved that hour or that hour and a half, um, for the Shark Tank work. So I'm like, hey, guys, this is what, this afternoon we're meeting Mrs. Curry in Maker Space. So we're doing three subjects right now. And, um, I think it kind of has sucked up some of that downtime, which can lead you off task. So it's, it's actually been a time benefit.
So is this going to go through throughout the entire year then?
I do, I have one project for each of the seven habitudes. Not all of them are as intensive, but this year I have Mrs. Curry. Last year I was doing them on my own with support of administrators, but, um, we've already talked about, I shared what my adaptability project is and she has some great insight. And now it almost seems like my adaptability project will be a warm-up, what I did last year, to this new project. So I think I'm actually going to purposely try to make them, um, more involved with the Maker Space just because of the benefits that I'm seeing. Without, of course, trying to make sure I hit everything needed in the curriculum.
It's cross-curricular, you know, not just once, academic arts and athletics all wrapped into the ball.
Totally. And also the kids are very, they're so excited to tell me about the progress that they had. I mean, I'll be out there bus duty and I had Ezra come up to me and he goes, you're never going to believe the progress that I made. You, you weren't there today and I can't wait to show you. And it's just like, it's so excited to, I'm so excited to see children so engaged and that the active learning is taking place in that environment.
I, as Tom spoke, you could hear there's science involved in, in some of, uh, the obstacle coursework. And students are learning content through these, through these projects, but I think more important than that, um, they're actually learning process skills and learning dispositions like resiliency, like how to fail well and, and iterate and try again. I mean, in one of the videos, the kid said, well, you know, I, I got feedback from my peers, so I had to improve, um, and revise my thinking and my project. So those dispositions and those, those learning processes, um, are, are very valuable.
Do you find... One last question, that, that the language the kids are using when giving feedback to peers. We've spent many, many years talking about feedback and what actionable and appropriate feedback and how to chime in with each other and do it appropriately. We've watched many videos and many presentations. Are you finding that is translating into appropriate ways of giving feedback or criticism or critique and that they're using good language and, and, and they're, they're imparting all the stuff that we've been trying to teach them?
I, I certainly think it's worth, working. And the fact that even brought it up themselves, I think, means they're more comfortable with it. They understand it's a natural part of the process. This has also worked really well to help our writer's workshop work because you're getting feedback from your peers when you're sharing your writing. Um, also when we did the Shark Tank spotlight, in addition to speaking to their, um, peers, they had to do written feedback so they could actually then give that form to that group so they could take it home, almost looking at it like data, like research for them to, um, to cull through. And I think that, um, I'm called the positive Posner, so I don't allow a, any negativity. You can give feedback and yes, it, it essentially is saying they think there's something negative. Um, but the way, they know within my walls, you have to say it within a certain way. And they know that if everything's perfect, why are we all there? We, we all have a, a lot to learn. But it does take a maturity and they do have to practice it and to understand that it's a natural process.
Do you think including these helps them focus more with the more traditional learning? Like are they able to pivot off these projects when they're deeply involved and then like budget their time better because they're excited to do it? Or, you know, does it, does it, does it help them focus on the different aspects of them, their day in, in a different way? Have you noticed any change in that aspect?
I do, I do think so because, um, yeah, as I've said, they were able to kind of make their time more concise and more powerful.
More efficient in their planning.
But to the flip side, being, you know, fully disclosing, um, when I was doing our reader's workshop lesson on the unit, reading our weather, reading our world, I had told Jim this, but, um, we're, they're researching a particular weather group and the first thing my student said was, can I make a model of this? When they were just supposed to be doing pen and paper research. So it, it is catchy. They do, they create, they build the different analogies.
More? Jeffrey? I, I just want to say that one of the important factors that I see in this, in this work is student engagement. And I see that increasing exponentially. And I think that when you engage students more, they'll do better overall. They'll enjoy coming to school and you'll find, you know, you know, that, that correlates to higher student achievement. Uh, you know, that's, that's really the goal. Um, I'm just wondering if you found that you're doing less of the traditional assessments in doing this work? And is that, is this work changing your practice as a teacher in the formal aspects of your work in terms of grading? Uh, because we talk about all of these wonderful, you call them habitudes. And these are habits that will serve these kids, you know, better than a whole lot of other things when they go out into the world to learn to collaborate and to work with others and to communicate with each other. So, um, in doing more of this work, are you finding that you're using different types of assessments? You know, the typical assessment that I think of is, you know, your multiple choice test, which is, you know, you know, terrible in a lot of ways.
This is going to answer your question, but when I, in fourth grade, I made a volcano and I still remember the volcano. Making it erupt, having, you know, learning about geology. And so I think these kids are going to remember the, this experience. Um, they, they may not, they may not, they're going to remember the foundational skills as well, but as, as they get older, they're going to always go back to some of these active experiences.
Right. I, I'm always interested in how we take these sort of abstract concepts and these active learning experiences and change the way we, we assess students because we are working with very arcane models of assessment. You know, the most being, the most arcane being the state assessments. Then we have our own local assessments. And so we've moved traditional teaching to this form of active-based teaching. How are we going to incorporate this now into how we assess our students? I think that's the next challenge because, you know, we, we rub up against the real world at that point. You know, so what do you tell the college, uh, college admissions officers about how you grade students? You know, that's, that's where, you know, you start to experience conflict is where you have to face the outside world. You know, we can look inwardly and say, this is wonderful, the kids are learning, they're great. And how do we show that in a way that the community understands? That out, out, people outside of the community understands, such as colleges, uh, people looking at our schools. Uh, you know, I, I think it's a question for the entire educational system. You know, how we truly assess kids, what assessments are really truly valuable? Kids are not going to go out into the world to take multiple choice tests. They're going to go out and work with people and solve problems in, in exactly the same way they're doing in the classroom. So, you know, in our district, we're always looking for ways to progress and move forward. We've been doing this work for a lot longer than a lot of districts. We really started this work maybe ten years ago with a lot of professional development, a lot of work in the background. Um, and now we see a lot of other schools talking about this sort of work and, you know, changing up their spaces. But I think that, you know, we're, we're always trying to move forward in this district. And so I think we have to figure out a way to take this work and do something even more progressive with it. You know, as we, because as a board, we're here to set a vision for the district. So we have to look at where we are now, which you're describing really well, and where we want to go. So where do we go from here? Because we always have to look at improvements. And so, uh, I see the assessment piece as a real challenge moving forward. Because we have people saying, well, this is nice, but prove to us that, you know, it's working. What can you show us? And a lot of this is abstract. And, um, so I think that's, that's a challenge.
Yeah, I think looking at performance-based assessment is really what you're talking about. And, um, we have that in, uh, our reading, writing and math at the, you know, we have our local assessments that we created that are much more relevant, formative and meaningful than any commercially publicized assessment, at least I, that's my bias.
No, wait, Jim, correct me if I'm wrong, those, those are assessments for APPR? Is that what you're talking about?
Some of the local assessments, um, you know, the local assessments that we've created for APPR are all performance assessments. Um, so they have, sometimes the performance is just a piece of writing, but when you think about the design process, so, you know, starting off with the brainstorming, planning, iterations, getting feedback, revising, making it better. Even that piece of writing is a performance. But I think what we're seeing here tonight really has potential for assessing not just some of the content skills and we could think about a more formal process for that, but the dispositional skills. So some of those habitudes and habits of mind that are really important as well. And what I see in this work that's so exciting and I think really significant is metacognition. Students are thinking about their thinking, they're thinking about their learning, they're thinking about how they can improve upon what they do. And all of that's really important. So going back to what you said, we're kind of assessing what we value. And I think meshing the two systems where we have, we'll always have some formal assessments that are much more content-specific perhaps. But these have potential for interdisciplinary performance assessments that measure much more.
Yes.
Yeah.
I have to assume that...
Sorry, sorry.
I'm sorry, Jane, go ahead. No, I have to assume also it's, it's a, it's a boon to the social and emotional wellbeing of the children. So I'm, I'm curious if you're seeing them much happier with each other in terms of social interactions? Just because putting them in groups like this where they're, I'm sure it's getting changed up a lot. Um, do you find that the emotional growth of the children is affected? Because it seems like it would be in a positive way.
That's always kind of been a priority in my classroom before even having habitudes. I've always thought that if they feel cared for, supported, they're, they're going to learn better. And I think they have this, this bond of this project that we've done that not everyone in fourth grade has been involved in. And yeah, I, I think it raises them. They felt like little executives, you know, so they naturally...
Talk about real life.
Right, yeah.
Yeah. Um, so I do think so, but I also do think that that's why I need to carry the work throughout the year. So it's not an isolated experience. Oh, remember we did Shark Tank? It's, it has to be a constant that is brought up again and again. Um, and we live it together, we bond together about it. And, um, sure, there, we're not, you know, the Brady Bunch in there who writes that expression. But, um, they need to learn how to work with someone that you don't necessarily have the same set of skills or the same desires and the same interests. And, um, that's why I've created the Positive Posner Partnerships because it's self-selected based on certain things that you know you're going to have to do together. And so it's that level of commitment. And then, um, throughout the year, I ask them, do they want to keep partners or change? And, um, it always really means a lot when there are two partners who have been able to through the whole course of the year remain partners and still continue to collaborate positively. So you can ask me at the end of the year, how many stayed together?
I just want to, sorry.
I'm sorry, you know, we, we've all as parents had our kids come home doing homework and in exasperation say, when am I ever going to use this? Right? And there's not always a good answer for that because I don't use a lot of the things that I, or content that I learned in school. But these are skills that you can absolutely unequivocally say you are going to need and use these skills every day in your real life. And I think that's really...
Yeah, that's great.
I just wanted to add two things. Um, one thing that I wanted to add, just being a specialist teacher and seeing, um, this fourth grade class come through my classroom after doing a project like this, seeing how they are kinder to each other and they do care for each other. And if there's someone maybe that's not making the best decision, having another peer saying, you know, maybe you could do this or remember what, you know, is coming through. And I'm noticing that and I see the whole school. And, um, back to what you just said, also, uh, these dispositional skills, we were just talking about this this morning. These are skills that make you a better person for life, a better learner, a better worker, a better teacher, a better person. Better whatever you're doing, you're going to have to work with people, whether it's collaborating on a presentation, corporate level, teaching, whatever it is. These are critical dispositional skills that everyone needs to operate in a positive way.
So I just wanted to, um, thank West Orchard for such an excellent presentation and such a diverse way to show us how the kids are using the design process across different mediums in the school. But I also wanted to pull out, um, before any final thoughts or closure, that, uh, what a tribute, Erin, to your colleague. And I, I didn't miss that and I'm sure many people in this audience didn't miss that either. And I, what better way to honor someone that you care deeply about than through working with our children here in this district? So I wanted to thank you and I know some of your colleagues have also shared with me, um, the, the, the commitment to habitudes, not only because they believe in that methodology, but because of the passion that your, um, that your colleagues showed towards leading that effort in this district. So I wanted to acknowledge that, um, for this community. So.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you. It was excellent. Thank you very much.
We have comments right now?
Not, not yet.
Um, so we're going to actually start to move towards, uh, preparing for our interactive presentation.
Yeah, I just want to say to the person, we, we do, we will have a comment period, but we have, we have, we have presenters? Okay, thank you, sorry.
So, um, I believe we're going to begin our presentation with Vicky giving an overview of how we got to today and then Kasum will actually, um, introduce our interactive colleagues, so.
Okay.
Should I start?
Yeah.
Well, actually, Vicky's going to go.
Kasum, are you going to give a background on...
I was going to give, but you can certainly do that. I was going to give a background of how it started and what we are today.
Oh, why don't you go ahead and do that? And if I want to fill in, then I will.
Okay.
Well, maybe I'll just say a few words.
Absolutely.
So, uh, today we have a presentation by Interactive Inc. This, uh, this presentation has been the culmination, well, in a way, it's not necessarily culmination, but a beginning of, of our work. But this presentation has been, um, a culmination of, of a very careful and inclusive process. Uh, where the board charged, um, a committee, a board advisory committee made up of representatives from different organizations in our town, uh, organizations that work with our children. Uh, from the PTA to, uh, Friends of Really Theater, Sports Boosters, a town youth organization, uh, Town Rec Department. Uh, two really students participated in the committee as well. Um, two board members, Jeffrey and I, were on the committee as well, us, Kasum, our administrator. So this committee worked, uh, met a number of times and worked very hard to craft an RFP, Request for Proposal. We got two responses to that request and we, uh, interviewed, uh, did Skype interviews and read the, read the responses and picked Interactive to conduct the work. So just giving the background to how this, how this came about. And, um, I want to welcome Dale Mann and Charles Shakeshaft today. Thank you so much for being here. And I will turn it to Kasum to, uh, give a further background to the, to the work.
Sure, just to, uh, we started this process last year, it was in December when, uh, the, the Board of Ed appointed the committee to develop a Request for Proposal and, um, the work with Interactive Inc. And the work with Interactive Inc. actually started, it was in February, in February or so that we started this process. And, and they'll, they'll speak to what they have done thus far. I just wanted to give, for this, we've started the training process, that's the end of the RFP or what was in that proposal. The next three days, we're really focusing on the training for our administrators, faculty, and staff here, and some parent trainings as well. And just to give you a little bit of background on Dr. Shakeshaft and Dr. Mann, Dr. Shakeshaft, she's a national and international leader in this area of, really, the topic is educator sexual misconduct. That's her area of expertise, and she has actually assisted in, with, with the Congress in terms of developing some guidance in that area. And she, when we had first, I know a couple of years ago, we had used her material to do some training internally as well. And Dr. Mann, he has been involved with school improvements for many, many years. And, and he also was a professor at Columbia, at Columbia University. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. It's a privilege to be here and to give you a report of the eleven months that we have worked both independently and together with you and the district. I note that it has been a process of ten months, and I want to call what, back to the intention of our, our purpose here, which the board well understands. We were asked to do a forward-looking analysis, to think about the future of the district and what improvements or refinements might be appropriate with respect to three areas: harassment, discrimination, and abuse. Those are three areas that already exist in the policies of this board. They are covered in multiple places. They are described in considerable detail. And part of what we have done is to take a look at those policies against a outline or a template, if you will, of best practice standard of care. The question is, if the district wants to minimize the, the amount or type of abuse that may be occurring, what should the district be doing? What should the schools be doing? It's a standard of care which has nine components. There are four on that first slide. And the second one is the most important, the biggest safeguard against abuse, and the most likely way to prevent it is to encourage reporting. After that, there is investigation and complaint resolution. You will find in our report that investigation and complaint resolution are areas in which we've made recommendations, and the district has looked at those recommendations and is in the process, I think, of contemplating them. This is the second part of, of the standard of care. Obviously, professional development and training, that says staff training and student training. We also recommend training and assistance to clarify for parents and for Chappaqua's communities how they may be of assistance. Hiring is a big part of this. We have recommendations with respect to school building supervision and what you can expect of your administrators in this regard, communicating board policies. And the final area has to do with healing. It has to do with, with not only the protections and the services that are available to the victims of abuse, but also to the people who do the work of schooling in the institutions where this has happened. So we have, as the last component of the standard of care, support for victims and also support for school staffers. There are a number of steps, this is the first half of them, of what we've done. We went through the organization of this. We asked for and received every single document, every single policy, every single procedure and practice that the district has. They were forthcoming, they were voluminous. There's a whole lot of stuff there, we've been through it all. And we took a look at the standard of care outline against what Chappaqua is doing and measured the extent to which the two match. That is the work of the standard of care analysis. And then we had a number of discussions with Chappaqua leadership. You have had an opportunity to consider our recommendations and our refinements and to think about what you wish to do with respect to that. And then we reviewed the revised standard of care worksheets. By the way, there are, there are three worksheets, one for each of the areas that were specified in the RFP, one for harassment, one for discrimination, and one for abuse. And those three worksheets are sixty pages, single-spaced, analyzing the district's policies and procedures against the best practices. And finally, where we are tonight, conclusions and recommendations from us to you. And that illegible slide is simply all of, all of the policies that, that we asked for and that you forwarded. They, by the way, those policies include relevant state and federal statutes and different guidelines from different agencies. So there's volumes of things which are reflected in what you've done. Our work has had two parts. The major part is the standard of care analysis. The big documentation is examining Chappaqua against best practices nationally. And then the second part of it is, we wanted to do some descriptive work about the current context of Chappaqua. The context is minor, the standard of care is major. And I think these, this is a summary of the findings. You have good policies. You have many good policies. If, as, as we have done, you read line by line, row by row, area by area, harassment, discrimination, and abuse, the different policies that, that touch on, reflect, and provide guidance in those areas, on the vast majority of the rows in the best practice standard of care, you are well-represented. There are overlaps, there's inconsistencies, there are some gaps in things, there are some areas that, that are not as clear as we would wish. And that's partly, and this is the third bullet there, it's partly a function that this board, as any board, has an accretion of policies that are developed over time and that reflect changes in regulatory environments, changes in laws, and changes in the board's own work as things evolve. So there's a lot of policies. And the, the last bullet there says, "The surfeit of policies and regulations is not uncommon, but for people who are seeking guidance, and your staff is, and for people who are seeking clarity, it's unreasonable to expect that they will spend every weekend from now till New Year's reading through all of the policies of the board." So we have some recommendations to make it more feasible and more practical for your, for you to give guidance to the staff. We've done some work with clarifications. We do recommend, there is a phrase that exists in several places in the policies about unwelcome sexual advances. We take the perspective that minors cannot invite an advance, and therefore, there cannot be even a welcome sexual advance from the perspective of an employee. Our recommendation to you is, you take out the word unwelcome.
Where it's employed.
Where, 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 that's right, where it deals with employees. Remember, our task has been not to look at peer-to-peer, student-to-student, but rather to look at adult to, to student. And so that is one of the recommendations. And then we added some world of practice stuff that helps clarify for the staff what we're talking about, descriptions of the impact. And we strongly recommend that you create a counterpart to the student code of conduct, which has in it a discussion of sexual harassment. We recommend that you create a code of conduct, or what we refer to as a plain language summary of this set of, of issues. Those are our recommendations, and then we have some other details here. We have, as you see on the last bullet there, we have drafted a summary of a common language guide for all staff members, and that draft is part of the final report from Interactive to you. And you have already begun a preliminary part of that in work that was done last summer. We built on that, and we brought it up to date with respect to the standard of care analysis, which we've now completed on your behalf. This is the conclusion, but it's not the end of what I want to say and what Cheryl will say. The question is, does Chappaqua conform to the standard of care as it exists in the United States in terms of best practice? And we believe that with the work we have done with staff and with the district's leadership, you are in fact in conformity with the national best practice standard of care. We don't believe that it is necessary for the board to revise or rewrite the voluminous policies that you have. You've adequately addressed those things for purpose of regulation, for purpose of liability, and other kinds of things. We do recommend that one single change in that one single phrase, but you don't need to rewrite the policies. We do recommend that you find ways to communicate those policies with much more clarity to your staff. And that is the, the outline, and it too is illegible, although I think you will see that it says, I want to find this, I think it's two five or two six. No, not palates. Two six is supporting the district's employees, two seven is protecting the students. That's with respect to sexual harassment and abuse, with respect to other forms of sex discrimination, supporting the district's employees and protecting the students. We have two perspectives. One perspective has to do with due process, it has to do with parity of communication, it has to do with boundaries for the staff. And the staff has concerns, and you can address those concerns in the common language summary by dealing with the protections that you already have in place that have to do with confidentiality, that have to do with due process, that have to do, have to do with investigation. So both things are worthy of consideration. This is the second part of what we've, we've done, and this is the analysis of, of context. We have been sending out web surveys and have had an amount of cooperation. The web surveys have gone to educators and staff, and there were responses from a hundred and twenty-five educators and staff. The web surveys went to students. We've had two-hundred-and-fifty-five, sometimes two-hundred-and-eighty-five, depending on the item, responses from Chappaqua students. And we've had parent responses from a maximum of three-hundred-and-sixty-two people who have helped us understand parent and community perspectives. We've hosted and listened to discussion groups and parent forums, and we've interviewed the building principals and visited the buildings for purposes of observation. This is students, this is what students, and this first group of slides has to do with, with perceptions. First students...
And those are high school students?
These are, these are middle school students and high school students, correct. And they feel less safe in the restroom and less safe in the out-of-the-way places in the school. By and large, they, they are, they have substantial feelings of safety. The educators think that there is a lot of awareness among the faculties about the issues which we have been examining. And this is a comparison, the left-hand column is the, is employees and staff, and what they think appropriate touch might be. And the right-hand column is those parents who responded and what they think appropriate touch might be. And there's a very high level of agreement between the two groups. This is the parents' perception of safety. It is the case that thirteen percent of the adults believe that the faculty and their teachers are doing things which make the child emotionally uncomfortable.
And we don't know what that means, because that was the...
That's the item.
...the stem. So it could be lots of things, you know, bullying, teasing, calling on them and, and making them feel uncomfortable themselves, but it's something that we think worthy of looking into.
And the none-of-the-above group there is, is sixty percent. There's a substantial fraction that, that did not know how to answer that question. We now turn to reporting, and as I said, the, the chief safeguard to prevent this kind of abuse is the willingness of people to report what concerns them. And the students say that if an adult did something, they would report. Four out of five students are, are, are certain that they would. They understand that there is the anonymous alert system, and some number of students already this year have made use of the anonymous alert system. And the last item is the bridge from reporting to investigating. We asked students if a staff member would listen to them if they reported. And sixty-two percent said yes. Essentially, two-thirds say yes, the staff member would listen. Sixteen percent said no. And twenty-two percent were undecided. So there is some variation there that may be concerning. Educators on reporting, four out of five educators think that the district policies about reporting are clear. That is, I think, a reflection of the, of the persistent and frequent training that you do for your staff about, for example, mandated reporting. And parents on reporting, nine out of ten parents say, "If they saw something, they'd say something." And in instances in which adult behavior made students uncomfortable, in November, we asked parents, "Should the district proactively encourage reporting of that?" And again, nine out of ten parents want a proactive response by the district in that regard. We now go from the question of reporting, which is central, to the next step, which is, if something is reported, what happens? And three out of four students who said they would report, sixty-two percent said the staff would listen to them, I already said that, and asked if they reported a problem, again, sixty-four percent said yes.
Fifty-four.
Fifty, I'm sorry, fifty-four percent said yes, there's a drop there. Twenty percent said no, and twenty-five percent were undecided. This is educators on, on, on investigating. Fifty-seven percent of the educators believe they know how the district will investigate, what the procedure will be, what the process will be. Fifty-seven percent say, "Yeah, I think I understand that," but that means a substantial fraction does not. And if they don't understand what's going to happen in an investigation, they may be reluctant to report. So it's important, in the common language summary, that you be specific and clear about the investigations that the district will do. This is parents on investigating, ask what an administrator will do. Forty-six percent said, "I don't know." Thirty-five percent said, "There will be an investigation." And twenty percent, one in five, said, "There will be an investigation, and then they'll get back to me." This has to do with professional development and training. This district spends a substantial amount of time and spends a substantial fraction of its agenda for professional development on exactly these issues. on exactly these issues. Educators are clear about that, although half of them would like some additional attention to it. Parents are also requesting more information and more attention. This is district and school practices. Good job controlling visitors, that's among educators. Parents are a little less enthusiastic about that. And down at the bottom, only half of the parents are supervised with supervision that occurs in school events outside the school, outside the building. In general, parents would like more communication with respect to these issues from the district and the school to themselves. And it is the case that in satisfaction of what we've been doing with you, Dr. Shakeshaft is meeting with a number of the faculty and administrative and community members and talking them through some issues that can illuminate this work and can help guide people's behavior. Let me say one thing before I recognize Cheryl. We have had an opportunity to do this work independently. And this analysis reflects our best judgment. It also is our responsibility, and it's Interactive's responsibility, that the report is Interactive's responsibility alone. It's also the case that we've enjoyed cooperation and support and counsel and argument from district leadership to us. That is as it should be. We could not do this kind of close examination of how this district proceeds without it having been a cooperative process as well as an independent process. In my experience, it is unusual that a district opens itself up to this kind of inquiry, and particularly so given the recent history of Chappaqua. That you have done so speaks very highly of you as a district and of the commitment and dedication of this board. And I think it's wholesome. I hope it's helpful to you.
So I want to talk a little bit about just a brief discussion of what the training is about. But first, I will tell you, I've worked with hundreds of school districts where something has happened. This is the first time I've ever seen a school district do what you've done, which is say, come in, look at our policies, see what we need to do, give us, you know, your feedback in terms of what you know. So this is highly unusual and wonderful. And so I'm excited about it because now I can say, you know, here's a district, and this is what you might want to do. The other piece of it, and what was in there, is that we had made a suggestion about kind of annual looking at what's happening. Because what we looked at were the rules, the policies, and make them clear. Well, the next step is, are they being carried out? And that, while that wasn't part of our work, it seems to me that that's a useful thing to do, you know, regularly. And that we made a suggestion that perhaps a committee that includes parents and staff be part of that annual review of how things are going and what things look like. So the training that I'm doing, I focused on two areas that I think are really important. The one area is the notion that all of us have a violation potential, meaning that it's possible that any of us in this room could cross a boundary. All right? Given the circumstances, given certain circumstances. And so while there are two kinds of abusers, one is a fixated abuser, and we would call those pedophiles. And so their sole focus is on something sexual with children. That's the least number of people who sexually abuse in schools. The most are what we call situational abusers. And those are people who don't necessarily have a sexual desire for children. They just take advantage of situations. Or, as I'm going to say, they cross boundaries because a convergence of things happen in their life. And that convergence includes some of the things that you would look for that would be a caution, both to you as an individual but also to administrators and others, to be able to say, I think you're getting close to some violation potential. We need to work with this. And that brings in the second part of the training, which is on boundaries. And everybody as kind of a boundary watcher or as the bystander. So most of the things that happen in schools, people see. They just don't know what it is they're seeing. Or they assume it's harmless when it might not be. And so part of the training is about being able to identify actions of others that might indicate that there is something happening that needs to be looked into. And so those two things, the notion of what are those vulnerabilities and risk factors? And then what is the role of bystanders? And bystanders are all of us, parents, kids. It's everyone else except the person who's the offender. And that's the way it will stop, for people to have a kind of transparent and accepting community where you feel comfortable being able to say, I think you're stepping over a boundary. Or to say to someone, you need to look into this. I think that person is stepping over a boundary, and it needs to be investigated. And so I'm just going to quickly try to explain this. So your violation potential is a combination of risk factors, which I'll talk about, how vulnerable you are as an individual, and then how much accountability goes on. So the more risk there is, the more risk factors there are, and the more vulnerable you are, the more likely you are to step over boundaries and perhaps sexually abuse a child. The thing that's supposed to rein you in are these accountability issues. So let me give you a couple of examples. I've just made slides that I'm not going to go into each of them. And these materials will be... we're going to put them on a website so they're available to everyone. But things like risk factors are... a teenager is a risk factor. Now, that doesn't mean the teenager is doing it. It means that people who work with teenagers or adolescents are in a riskier situation in terms of them crossing boundaries, the adult crossing the boundaries. And so there's a number of things that sort of would say, you're working in a risky thing in terms of you crossing a boundary. Other things are when you shift out of the teacher role, or teachers who do a lot of talking with students about their personal lives and trying to counsel them. Students feel comfortable going to the teacher and saying, you know, my parents just don't understand me. I need to talk to you about this. Those are risky situations, and situations teachers shouldn't be involved with. There are counselors for that. There are other people to do that. People who do tutoring outside of school or who tutor one-on-one and tutor in isolated places where people aren't watching, that can be a risky situation. Shouldn't happen. Meeting with students in an informal setting, like coming into Starbucks and seeing a group of students and sitting down with them and, you know, just talking and having a social time. That's really, again, a risky situation. Because it takes you from your role as teacher and authority and there to help you, but it takes you down to a peer level. And that's when that becomes a risky situation. And blurring teacher roles and meetings, hugging, touching... There's more specific information about that. But the whole issue of when is a good touch, when is it okay? What are we talking about? I want to make it clear that I don't believe that you shouldn't touch kids. I just believe there are ways to do it. You do responsive touch. And you also protect their boundaries. You don't... if somebody's in need, you can easily say, do you need a hug? Right? So those are very different than the kinds of touch that can lead to crossing boundaries. And in fact, touch without that would be crossing a boundary. Having kids in your home or apartment, employing them at your home for the summer by themselves. Those are risk factors. Accepting gifts, giving email addresses, texting them personally, personal texts, personal emails, personal Facebooks. Those are all risk factors. Functioning in two roles, meaning you're the teacher and you're a coach or you're a drama instructor or you're a chorus instructor. It means that you have access in the class, but also access after-school times in places where there's not much supervision. That's a risk factor. Being in a business association with the parents or just friendly with the parents, it provides an intimacy and closeness that says, you just need to watch this. These can be risky situations. So then the vulnerabilities. So these are the situations. So you kind of look at how many situations am I in? How much risk am I taking by, you know, acting this way, by doing these things? Then it combines with your vulnerabilities, which are, you know, you want students to like you, it's very important. You have unmet needs. You get your social interaction with students. You're lonely. You have grief. You have financial concerns. You have marital problems. You have medical issues in the family. You're burned out from your job. You feel underappreciated. You avoid dealing with emotional issues. Worry about certain students, identify with your students, physically attracted to students, overprotective of students, all things that cloud your judgment. So the more of these things you have as a professional, and this is the training we're doing, the more likely they are to cloud your judgment. You know, you're losing your perspective. You're getting off. You're in a dangerous situation because you have these vulnerabilities. And then, there's a lot of vulnerabilities. And then we come to accountability. So accountability is the thing that we can do, which is regular and close supervision, and supervision in certain places and certain times. You know, before school, at lunch hour, after school, checking rooms, doing kinds of things. Follow-up, so people know, everybody knows that it's unlikely that anything I'm doing won't be seen. And not just by administrators, but by your colleagues. Peer supervision, ethics and boundary training, the strong policies that are reviewed annually. The state statutes are accountability measures. Professional codes. Training for students on developing and practicing healthy and safe boundaries. That's an accountability. That helps students be able to know what's going on. Training on reporting for students, training on reporting for staff, reporting ethics concerns, and the district ethics team. So we think of those as the notion that you've got these risk factors, you've got your vulnerabilities that may cloud your judgment or move you to a place that you might not have moved otherwise. And that one thing that helps that is first knowing that, but secondly, all the levels of accountability that are the responsibility not only of school administrators but of colleagues and parents. I said earlier when I was talking to parents that only about between 9 and 11% of kids report if an adult in a school has targeted them as a victim of sexual misconduct. So that means 89% of the kids aren't telling anyone. But even when they do report, even when they do say something, kids will usually tell a friend. And then that friend often tells generally the mom. Goes home and says, Mom, you know what's happening. And it's the mom who calls the school. Not the mom of the kid who's the target, but the mom of the kid who said, this is happening to my friend. And so again, there's a role to play as parent personally with your own kids, but also as parent and community member. If you see something that concerns you, to report it. Because the issue is, if something seems odd and off to you, report it. You don't have to know if it's really happening. You don't have to know for sure. You're reporting something. That takes to the next step of investigation and following up. And that's really important. And so having a culture in which that's just a given, that if you see something, you'll say something, can really change, especially if everybody sees themselves as a bystander and the responsibility of the bystander is to report. So that's a quick thing of the kind of training we're trying to get across, which is, don't imagine that you couldn't cross a boundary. And if people are crossing boundaries, these are the things that might happen to them. And we all have bystander responsibilities, and this is what we might look for. So that's a quick description of some of the training we're doing. We do think that students should be trained, that that's important. They should understand the policies and the issues. What we often find amongst kids is they'll say, oh, yeah, Mr. Smith and Jessie Marie, their boyfriend and girlfriend, yeah. And you say, what? Oh, yeah, everybody knows their boyfriend and girlfriend. And they see it as normal, because nobody stopped it. Nobody said to them, you can't do this. You know, this is not allowed. And so the more kids understand what is and isn't appropriate, the more they're able to be bystanders as well as work on their own boundaries. The second thing is, it isn't just, it isn't that, at least in the upper grades, that somebody's just always focusing. Very often, the kids have crushes on the teachers. That's pretty normal, you know? So we need to make sure that teachers don't respond to those crushes, don't respond to that, you know, idolatry. And so, you know, that's really important, to understand that and to work with teachers about. It wouldn't be unusual for a person to have a crush on you. But these are the behaviors you have to be careful that you don't cross the line there and how you do that. So that's some of the training we're working on.
Comments?
Okay.
Comments from...
That is a million questions.
Thank you, yes. I do have sort of an explanatory comment and a question for you. I want to go back to the language that you mentioned, and I appreciate what you're saying about the word unwelcome. And so that's very important. The reason it's there is I think it's because that policy, now that you mention it, is probably trying to do too much because it's referring to student-on-student behavior as well as adult-to-student behavior. And I'm sure you read it carefully. And what it does say is that the adult-to-student part will be deemed unwelcome per se. So the policy does address that concern. But so if we remove the word unwelcome, what may happen is that the student-to-student behavior will become problematic. Now, you know, we haven't gone there. We're not saying that student-to-student contact is right or wrong. We just are not addressing that in the policy. And so, but that's why that language is there. But so my question to you is that rather than remove the word unwelcome, that perhaps we separate out the... Because the policy has to do with harassment as well.
Well, that's our recommendation.
So instead of removing that word out, that we have just a student-to-student policy and then an adult-to-student. If we remove that word, we will complicate the student-to-student aspect.
If this board takes those steps and deliberates and comes to some conclusions about exactly the issues that are between us, we think that's a useful way for you to proceed.
And...
There is a distinction there.
And we don't think that the student-to-student policy should be combined with the adult-to-student policy. Those are very separate things. And so lumping them all together causes confusion. So the student-to-student, the definition of sexual harassment among peers, whether it's students or adults but who are peers, is unwanted contact. All right? But so that's why we want them separated. So the adult-to-student doesn't say unwanted. It just says no contact, you know, no sexual contact.
Right. I mean, of course, harassment is never welcome, but it was just the part of student-to-student contact that we didn't want to make per se...
Right.
...a violation of policy, because that would really complicate things. So that's why it's worded that way. It's cumbersome, because as you said, it's a result of state law. We try to follow the law and the policies. So I just wanted to make that initial point.
Are you still...
Any comments? Sorry. First of all, thank you. Very involved and detailed. I appreciate all the recommendations. I have a question about reporting. And it would be hard in this day and age to not think about professional, powerful women who didn't report things for decades. That if that happens pervasively, you know, in this country, how is a student supposed to feel comfortable and safe? And I mean, it's really, really, you know, a bigger problem than just in schools. But as far as reporting and then there was a question about follow-up. You know, we run into the issue of privacy and that we're not allowed to say what was done if a teacher is disciplined or a teacher is given an improvement plan. That information cannot go back to the original person who made the complaint. So I want to talk about ideas on closing the loop to make the reporter feel that they did the right thing by coming forward but not having any idea what the consequences were. Because that would violate the privacy and rights of a teacher. So to me, that's something that, as a... So if, to me, that's something that has always felt open-ended is that you want to be able to tell the person that something was done or that they were right or that they were wrong or whatever. But we can't always do that. So is there a best practice in that situation?
Well, you can do more than we do, is what I mean. You can't say it's so and so and this is what happened and whatever. But you can say, for instance, a parent comes and has a concern. You can let them know that you're investigating. You can tell them that. And you can tell them what the process is. You know, this is a process that takes a few weeks. There's an investigation and whatever. Many, I know school districts that, that sort of keep a notice that there were three reports of this. They were investigated. Two were unfounded. One action was taken. That's it, all right? It's not a specific person, but it lets people know that something's happened. Very often what I find in school districts is the kids and the parents think nothing's being done. And sometimes that's true. But, but in fact, there's a lot going on, but there's no communication. And school, school folks feel kind of hamstrung because they're worried they can't say anything. But you can actually say a few things that at least can assure people that we're, that this, 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 an investigation is taking place or investigation has taken place. So there are ways to do that, which, which are transparent enough to let people know something's being done without compromising or violating the rights of the adult or, or the, or the student. And I think that's what we're, we're moving more toward. For instance, at university, which isn't exactly the same thing. But I get a notice on my telephone, just as a faculty member. Every time there's a rape on campus. Every time there's any, any kind of crime on campus. Anytime there's a faculty member who's violated the law, you know. So I get those notices. And I don't know who they are, but I know that this happened and that it was investigated. And then we get a notice that resolved. I don't know how it was resolved, but we get those notices. So I, I guess that isn't quite the same thing as, as K through 12 district. But it is the, the way people are going in terms of reassuring. And actually, what the university's doing is a law. They have to do that. But it helps to know that these things are being responded to.
And then another question, and maybe this is more for psychologists or, you know, that genre. But some kids are okay with a high five and a hug and some kids aren't.
Right.
And so when you talk about boundaries, to some extent, they're in the eye of the individuals involved. And what I'm, what I heard from you was, you know, this, if you have these risk factors for the, for the teachers, you know, they're dealing with students. They're dealing with real people, with real emotions. And, and students look to their teachers for advice and counsel on, on subjects other than just academics. And they look to them as another advisor or, or guider in, in life. And how do you allow that important work to happen and not turn it into a very clinical and frozen relationship, but still have those clear boundaries? And I'm sure there's no perfect answer for that, but.
Well, I think there are a couple of ways. One is that it's not either or. And so, for instance, a teacher could have a lot of advice about academics, about colleges, about interests, things like that. But when a student comes and says, you know, you know, my boyfriend wants to have sex and I just don't really want to. Well, you know, that's the kind where you say, you know, there are people who can work with you on that. I'm not trained to do that. And, and I care about you, so let's go down and talk to the counselor. We make ourselves important. And it feels important because some people, they want us to. But in fact, most of us are not really trained to do that. And it's, it takes you over into a space that you then have an intimacy with that student that is, is not particularly healthy. And you're also teaching the student, when you walk them down to the counselor, that there are things I can do and that I care about you, so I want to make sure you get to the right person who can help you. And there are things I can't do. And somebody else needs to do them. And so I think that, that, that understanding that piece. And when you say comfort, absolutely. I don't know how many times as a parent you, 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 people come up and touch your kids and, and do whatever. Well, your kid may not want that. You know, my daughter didn't even like to sit on Santa's lap. You know, so, so, you know, and that's the boundary part. That's helping kids be able to, to have their boundaries. And we respect them. Not hugging them, but can I give you a high five? Is this comfortable? You know, so you learn, you learn what's comfortable. And even if the kid is comfortable with a full frontal hug, that there are, there are limits. So just because a child is comfortable doesn't, doesn't really matter in, in some ways. So I, I think that, and the other thing you said earlier, which I think is really important, which is, you know, how can children, how can kids report if, if, if we adults can't report? And that's where the bystander comes in. I don't think it's up to the kids to report. You know, yes, if they do, that's fine. But that's putting a big burden on them as children. It's up to us as adults, as bystanders, to be looking out and seeing all the things and to say, that doesn't look quite right. Or I heard that, I'm gonna, I'm gonna report that so that that can be looked into. On the other hand, it's good that kids know how to report if they want to report and know that their boundaries should be safe. And also know that even if they're really madly in love with the teacher and want to have sex with the teacher, they're not supposed to and it's against the law and they can't do it. Now, that won't stop them necessarily because we know it doesn't necessarily stop them. But, but they need to understand that. Because that gives other kids the support to be able to turn to their friend and say, you can't do that. You know, because that's against the law. You can't do that. You know, that teacher can go to jail and it's not right and it's against the rules. You can't do that. And I'm gonna tell my mom or something. So I'm, I'm making it sort of, I, I don't mean to make light of it. But, but that's what the bystanders for. That's why we need to have stronger bystander community.
I, I think the bystander aspect is, is valid. I think, and it's touched upon in here, but, but I think it needs to be fleshed out, which is, to me, as, as a parent and a, and a board member, is a weakness, probably not just in our district, but in others. But it's the investigation procedures and the follow-through and then the ultimate resolution. And for me, and I think maybe for the administrators and the parents, I guess I'm looking for, in essence, like a flow chart that would say, you know, you make a report. This is where it goes. This is where it goes. This is where the next step. This, within the timeframe, which administrators, who's responsible, how the investigation goes, how it gets back. I think it's important for the teachers to know that. And I think it's important for the parents to know what happens. Because that will help with the flip side of the retaliation thing that seems to come out in here that people seem to be concerned about. We heard with, with previous instances in this district, they, they don't want to come out and say something because it's going to adversely affect their child. I think the clarity is important. And I think that still needs to be fleshed out here. That, and that's work that we can do in terms of making sure that flow chart and those policies and those, those follow-through procedures get followed. I, as you said, I'm not surprised that we have the policies. It's how everything is being carried out and the clarity and how it's being communicated to everyone. So I'm wondering if there's additional assistance there. And also, I, I do like what you're saying about maybe having a monthly roundup. We had reports on this. This was the, you know, this is what happened. But I'm wondering too, and I know it's, it's, there's legal questions about this as well. When you have a parent that is very concerned about something and whether they report it anonymously or not anonymously, what is, what is best practices on the circle back? So that they know that something is being done.
Best practice is to circle back, to say that something's being done. Parents need to know that. And actually, you do have a flow chart.
Yeah, we had created one. It was early last, it was actually for the last school year, a flow chart on how to report abuse in an educational setting and domestic setting. That has the entire timeline and looping back to, and I could share that with the board. But that's something we have in our faculty rooms and has been given to teachers. In fact, even beyond teachers or staff as well. So they're aware of the process. And it has the reporting piece. Everything is attached. So it's on one page.
I don't think the parents know.
No.
Get it.
Really, it's an internal piece for us.
Right.
For the school, like if there is a report that is made.
Right.
This is, this is what we need to do. And that's why, that was one of the reasons, is to kind of take all of these different, you know, like policies. And it was on a one page, so people really understood if this happens, this is what we need to do next. This is what we need to do next with a timeline.
And I think it would be, I, I mean, I don't know, again, if there's something to be said about, I guess, part of the surveys, which, which I would have liked to see more in the surveys, asking the parents, where are they looking to get their information? And what's the best way to get it to you? So that they know how to follow this. Because, you know, they're not going to go through the handbook. Like, and so I think it is imperative that we find a way to make this easily accessible.
Well, one of the, we agree. And one of the things is to have a site, for instance, on the website with lots of information for parents, but also things like the flow chart and other things. So that it's there, transparent, you can look at it.
Interesting you say that because Christine sent out an email today asking parents to let, let her and let us know how they prefer to be.
To be communicated with, which I know we've discussed about, which is great. We're trying to do that. It's very important.
Yeah, that's all in, in process. I think that, speaking to, on the reporting, the bystander aspect, you caught my attention when you said that a parent might say, well, I, I'm not really sure if that's true, so I won't say anything. And, and you're saying, it doesn't matter whether it's true. And so I think in my experience, talking to parents and just in all the years that I've had kids here, not, it's not really related to that issue. It can be related to any other issue of, you know, I don't know if this is true, so I'm not going to say anything. I think that's really common.
But it is not the parent's obligation to investigate.
Well, that's the point that I, I think needs a lot of focus. That it's okay if you don't know if something is true or not because that will be determined. And I think that's a sticking point there for people.
Your policies state, as they should, that administrators must pay attention to innuendo, rumor, and gossip.
That, that's right. But people.
Very strong.
And it's a hard concept to get across because most of us think, well, you know, I might be wrong. And if I, and my, my thing is, so what if I'm wrong? I, if I'm right, I've saved a kid. If I'm wrong, well, okay. I mean, it's not there, but at least we know it's not there. So the, the notion is, is that, is that in any of these things, we don't have to know. If we have a concern, we report it and then it gets investigated. That's the process. And so you don't have to feel, maybe, maybe I'm making something out of nothing. Maybe I am. Well, if you're, if you're saying to yourself, if you're worrying about it and thinking about it, it should be reported. You know, it's clearly something that, that you see and have a feeling about. You may not know what it means. And that's where, that's why this is an issue with trying to help bystanders. We may not know what these actions mean, whatever we're seeing, but we know we have a feeling about it. Or it seems not quite right. Or it's a little off. Or it seems a little creepy. Or there's a little thing that's bothering me about that. Well, report it. That's important. It's just, it's just that important. That's how we, that's how we can stop something either at the beginning or before it even happens.
I just want to thank you for all the hard work you've done and working with the district. You said you haven't done this before with the district. And I think we try to be a very progressive district in many ways and I think this shows what we're trying to do. So, thank you. And I also, I'd like Dr. Mann and Shake Shaft for the work you've done, for the patience you've had with us and for the whole entire process. I think we were talking about flow, I know we were talking about flow charts. And I think what I would like to see, I don't think it's necessarily from you, but from us, the next step is, what is our flow chart as our next steps? Now, what are we, we've got this report and we're actually going to have a full written report. What are we going to do as a district to, you make recommendations, you make suggestions, some that, you know, that are required, some that aren't. And I think that we as a district should come up with a flow chart and what our next steps are, what our intentions are, and publish that. And I think that's the first step to communicating and showing really where we are as a district and who we want to be as a district.
So if it's okay, I, I think one of the things that we should do in the immediate future is we'll publish this meeting, right, with our PowerPoint and then our written report. We need to get all that online for the community to see that information. And then we'll work to have something prepared for the January meeting of what our next steps are as a district. After we have enough time to analyze all these documents plus reflect on the training that's going to be occurring today, will occur today and then over the next few days.
And also, just like to thank Kasum, who got,
No, of course.
Who's put in the unenviable proposition of being independent between the committee, the community, interactive, the administration. And you did a yeoman's job or great job or whatever the right word is. So thank you, Kasum, for taking on that burden and doing it well.
I have one last question. So you talked about the standard of care and you talked about that we, we meet the standard of care, that there's areas for improvement. Is there a, an A-plus standard that is above and beyond what? It may not be achievable. I mean, it may not be possible in a public school setting. But is there a, an above the standard of care? Is there a, an ideal way for situations to be handled or for education and for whatnot? Is there something better?
That's what's down the left-hand column of the analysis.
Right.
Yes.
All those things are the optimum procedures.
Yeah. I think in, I think in some ways, standard of care in some areas is used as kind of the base, the sort of bottom. In this case, a better phrase might be model practice, okay? That this is the model practice. We use the term standard of care for another reason. But, but it's not the bottom. It's not just the bottom. This is what we would expect. This is what I expect every school district to do. This is the model practice. This is what you need to do. And so if you don't do some of that, then you're at the bottom.
Got it.
Or that you're, but if you do it all, Or that you're, but if you do it all, you've, you've really met the, the model practices. And I just want to also say, you might meet all the model practices and do everything right, and it's still possible that a child might be sexually abused. It doesn't mean it's foolproof, but it does mean that, that there's a lot more safety for the children than, than if you don't do it. And, and it really, it's really a cul, a school that has a culture of, "We won't let this happen to kids," is a school where people who are going to do those things don't want to work. Now, we don't want them to go to another school and do that, but, but, you know, what I'm saying is, if, if you're going to cross boundaries and do that, and you're in a school where people actually talk about that and say, "I've noticed, and you did this," and whatever, well, you're not going to want to work at that school. It's not going to be easy to do what you want to do.
So, I, I want to reiterate the thanks to you again. We really appreciate this work. It's been so important to us and to the entire district. And I, I want to also echo the thanks to Kasum, who has worked night and day. Kasum has a very difficult job. She came to our district and did a lot in, in her department, and took this on as added work, and was here at night and weekends, working on everything. So, and all of our administrators work in this way, too, so, but in this particular instance, I, I do want to thank you for doing this extra work for us. And also, I just also want to point out to the community that this work doesn't stop. You know, just because we've had this report, we, we would still take feedback from the community if there are other suggestions, so this is not really an endpoint. We, we continue to improve every year. That's, you know, schools are about continuous improvement. So, there's that. And also, because this has been so important to our community, I do want to open it up for comments and questions from our community, in addition to the usual public comment period, if that's okay with you. So, we would, at this time, and if that's okay with the board as well, to make, to make an exception, because this has been, you know, a very difficult time and unusual in our community. So, I'd like to give an opportunity to the public to ask questions and make comments while the, Dr. Shake Shaft and Dr. Mann are here. So, if that's acceptable to the board, I'd like to open it up.
Let me stick to three minutes.
We, yeah. So, we would ask that you stick to three minutes.
Or to the public comment procedures, yes.
Yes, stick to the usual public comment procedures, because we do have a meeting, and we will have another public comment period, but we want to limit this to this topic. So, please limit yourselves to three minutes, so that everyone gets a chance to speak, so that we can continue our meeting. So, at this time, anybody who'd like to come up, please come to the microphone and identify yourselves, and, you know, make your comments or ask questions. No? Okay. Yes. You can, you can lift it up. It should hopefully... David, can, can you help?
You can lift the mic. We'd like it for the, for the record.
Thank you, David.
Hello? Is that better?
Sure.
My name is Jules Buckspahn. I've lived here for almost 20 years. I have a question about some of the survey questions in there, and there was a couple that were related to the students' confidence that their, exactly, their suspicion, and that complaints would be followed up, and would be pursued. And the couple that I noticed, it was like 52%, 62%. So, I don't know, is that just the teenage mind? And are those numbers low relative to what you see elsewhere? Or is that about what kids that age say about such things?
Well, you know, the way I look at it is, I don't know if it's low. It's low for you, meaning that this isn't a district that wants 50% of its kids to not feel that they can say something. So, so I don't want to normalize it by saying, "Well, kids would say that anyway." We want a district where all the kids feel like they could say something, and something will be done. Now, I'm not saying this is a representative sample of kids. We didn't get everybody to respond, so we're working off of what you've got here. And we're not generalizing to everyone, although the student sample from the high schools is pretty, is, is pretty strong, but otherwise, not the middle school. But what I'm saying is that it's at least an indicator that this is something that you might want to, want to pay attention to, and help kids feel more comfortable that they can report.
This is very significant to me, that only slightly more than half of the students think their concerns would be pursued. That seems alarming.
And, and, and it might be that teenagers would say that. It doesn't matter if teenagers would say that. We want them to say something else, okay? So, so whether or not this would be the teenage mind, from my perspective, we want to go beyond that. We want, we want, you know, 100% of kids to say that they feel that they could report, and something would be done.
The questions of investigation and resolution are very important, not only for the kids, but also for the teachers. And so, you know, we paid a lot of attention to that, and there are very specific recommendations in the report.
So, it's a good question, yeah.
Barbara Buckspahn. As far as those recommendations about investigations in the report, might it be helpful if investigations or reporting is done to an independent body versus the school itself, where there might be a conflict of interest there, where the administrators themselves are following up on a report that they might somehow be involved in themselves in some tangential way? Like an ombudsman, for example?
Well, let me just say that the, if it's an adult-to-student, if the report goes to administrator, and it's a, it's an actual report, it's, it goes to the police.
Oh, it goes to the police.
Yeah. They're the outside, they're the outside people that actually do the investigation when something happens.
We do that. It's required by law to enforce the state.
So, if there is, if there is an investigation, if there is a suspected, if, if someone is suspected of having inappropriate contact with the student, first, it immediately goes to the police?
Not immediately. If, if it's, if it's, if it's something called, if it's, if you, if you believe that it's imminent, it immediately goes to the police. If you have something that says, "I, I'm concerned, because this guy seems to stay after school with kids," the first thing you do is investigate that the person's staying after school with the kids. Then it goes to the police. And so, so there's a, there's a, there's a dual standard. What I would say is, well, it might be the case that an ombuds person would work. What I would like to see is that somehow this community is able to heal enough that the administrators will do what they need to do, and you can trust that they're going to do what they need to do. And that's a piece of work that it seems to me may need to be done. It's their job to do it, and it's the teacher's job to report. And it's the, and so, we've got to make sure that's really happening.
Are there recommendations to build, to help build trust within the community in your report?
Yes.
And, and we think that's important, that, and, and one is transparency.
And communications.
Yeah.
And communications.
Right, and just one quick follow-up to the first question. If there is a suspected incident, and it is being investigated, should that information flow back to the parents, so we know that something is, is being followed up on? You said before, that's very important for parents to know, and I read something, you were in Psychology Today, 2012, I read an article where you say that could be, a timeline would be helpful to report back to parents, and show, give them a timeline of how the invest, when the investigation will be concluded, all of that detail. Should that go back to the parents as well?
Well, it's my, it's my position that, yes. Again, in ways that protect...
Identity.
The identities. But if I'm a parent, and my child, something's happened to my child, I for sure want to know what's happening. And I want to be able to look at this timeline and say, "Okay, you must have completed your investigation now." Or somebody calls me, and so, yes, the, those are, those are things that you can do without violating the confidentiality or the rights of someone who might be accused.
Is there a difference between informing the parents involved, or the parents of the potential student, versus informing the community at large?
There is a difference. So, there's two things that I think should be done. One is that you communicate with the parent of the child. That's important. And in fact, what I've done, what I've studied is that most of the parents who sue the school district in a civil suit, and blame the school district, it's because that communication didn't occur. It wasn't necessarily that something wasn't being done, it was that there was a lack of communication between the school folks and the parent of the child. That's one kind of thing that should be done. The second is, there are plenty of ways to just, you know, you know, in some kind of annual, or monthly, or whatever, just say, "We've had these, we've had X number of reports, this is what's been done." And it's just a number and a, and a notice, so that the community understands that we are getting reports, or we're not, and something's being done.
Can I, can I point out that in public policy, there are often conflicts among different competing principles? This is an example of that. The district has an obligation to protect the confidentiality of the child that makes the allegation, and the confidentiality of the person who's been accused. And that confidentiality conflicts with transparency. And so, that's why you have boards of education that go through these things and figure out what the balance is. But there is a tension. You're correct to note the tension.
Right. And so, it'll never be full transparency, because that would violate laws. But there may be ways that it can be done, especially in, to, to build trust, that, you know, we're not hiding anything, we're doing our job.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Victoria Alzepidi. I'm a community member, and I've also done quite a bit of work around sexual harassment in schools, so I bring that perspective. And I have two questions slash concerns. So, one is kind of building on themes around the survey, and it seems to me that kind of a critical piece is the recommendations and that gap analysis between where we are now and where we want to be, and also the possibility of having input from students, especially, and other constituencies within the school district, around the recommendations to make, to optimize their impact, and whether they'll be effective. So, I'm wondering if those recommendations will be made public, and if there is a process to get feedback about those recommendations from those different stakeholders.
Well, my understanding is that they will be made public, and then, in terms of feedback from the community, that's, that, we don't know what the decision of the board will be to, in terms of that, but they're certainly being made public.
Right, so we, I was just explaining a few minutes ago, we will post the report that's provided to us as soon as we have the board meeting ready to be online. That way, there's context around it. And then at the January meeting, we're going to come back after we do an analysis of the recommendations, to talk with the board on how we think we need to move forward. So, we'll take your comments into consideration, for sure.
Right, and I, I said after the presentation that...
We'll take your comments into consider...
I'm not saying our comments, but the students' perception of whether they think those recommendations will be effective.
So, we'll take your comments into how to move forward, including the students in that process, into consideration as we craft how we are going to recommend to the board we move forward. That's what I'm trying to say. So...
And, and what I said after the presentation is that this is only a starting point, this is not an endpoint, and that we will, after everything is published, that we will continue to take feedback from the community, and continue to work on this, as school districts always work to continue improving their processes. So, so I, I, I think that, that is an indication that we are continuing to take feedback, as we always do.
Right, because that's really the critical, whether they're going to be, the impact of the recommendations, whether they'll be effective. So, the second piece is, kind of, I think, in hearing all of the risk factors, which were really important and great to see, the one that I'm concerned has the most chilling and chilling effect, is the piece around the personal relationships with the students. And, you know, there is, it's a very slippery slope there, but my concern is, you know, for many young people, that relationship with the teacher, that, you know, when we think about who they report to, they often report to the teacher they trust most. And so, I just think, you know, I'm just concerned that seeing that in black and white as a bullet point, without context, and without kind of the nuances, could have a chilling effect on teachers' relationships with students, and that concerns me. And I don't know, in your experience with how you rolled this out, it's kind of building on what Allison was raising as a point earlier, how that can be done without, again, creating a more of a gap there, and allowing those relationships to thrive. I don't know if it requires having more training for the students on how to very delicately build on that relationship, and know when to carry it to the next part, you know, it's such a fragile, so...
So, my response to that would be that this is some work that the teachers actually have to do, which is figure out how to maintain the relationships with kids without crossing boundaries. Now, I want to also say that just because some of those are risk behaviors, doesn't mean they won't happen. You know, one of the things was kids wearing provocative clothes. Well, I don't know if that's going to stop, you know, but what I'm saying is that it is, it is a very delicate thing. How do you maintain the connections between adults and kids, the positive ones, without crossing boundaries, and keeping it, "I'm the professional, you're the kid, and I care about you, and this is what I do." And so, we talk, a lot of that takes time for teachers to actually talk among themselves about their own strategies and how they do it. The worst thing would be for teachers to just withdraw and say, "I'm not going to do anything." And what I would say to the teachers, and said to them the last time I talked to them, was, "That's unprofessional. That's unacceptable." Any, any teacher who does that is only thinking of themselves and their own safety, not thinking of what's best for the kids. And I get why they might say that, but we've got to figure out something in between there. And so, that, that's a, that's a process that takes some work. I do think that a lot of teachers have it down. They're caring and close to kids, but they're not crossing any boundaries. So, I think that we have more teachers who can do that than we think, and, and, and most of the relationships that happen, that you're talking about, my guess is, they're not boundary-crossing relationships, really. They're, they're, it's clear that the teacher cares about the child, and is there to help them, but there are some limits to it.
So, you are covering this in the training with them, those nuances?
Yes.
Because I think even with, you know, kids who are suicidal, kids who are facing depression, it's so much even broader than the...
Than this, that's right. And, and, and again, I think it takes not just us coming in, that's just like a one-shot thing, that's not, it's them talking about it, and keeping...
It's the cultural...
Yes, keeping that conversation going about, "How do we do this? How do we make this work?" Because that's, that, that is them. They've got to do that work.
You know, one more thing...
She does this in the training, that was a brief summary of some highlights, and she has a book coming out next year.
Wait, maybe. If I keep coming and doing these things, I'll never get the book done.
There's one more thing that I wanted to kind of piggyback on that, is, I think we had spoken about it at the last meeting, of working with our students, you know, about teaching them about appropriate relationships with adults, with the safer, smarter kids that we have, we're implementing, and we, and that's starting at kindergarten. So, that's another, you know, training for students, early, early on, explicit teaching to kids. I think that'll be helpful as well.
Any, any other comments? No? Okay. So, well, thank you once again, and we, we look forward to continuing this work with you.
Well, it's been a pleasure to work with you, and a pleasure to work with the community. Thank you.
We'll see you bright and early tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I just want to, I want to do some time management here. We have the, we have the website that we still need to talk about. Okay. Josh, do you want to come up, so we can go back to the website?
So, we are going back to the superintendent's report.
Okay, so, um...
Glad to live on my own, Josh.
Okay. So, I just wanted to ask Josh, because as a part of, we had a work session before our board meeting today, where we addressed numerous topics. The first was, we had a group of students who had come on the hockey team, and asked us if we would consider basically having a policy that would allow some of the eighth graders to play at the varsity or JV level, if they qualified under, under regulatory guidelines. So, we had discussed this at the board level, to see if this was a direction we wanted to go in, and the consensus was that we would look into this, to do something possibly in the future, but there's a lot of planning that needs to take place, there's concern, because the implications of implementing a policy like this are pretty significant, but it's something that people will be open to discussing in the future. So, that was one piece of it. And the second, we appreciate the town sending their design team in to show us the sign that was, that they're, that we're working with collaboratively outside of Bell. And the other thing that we talked about was, as, we had a few graduates that asked if they could use the weight room over the, the holiday break. We anticipate that happening again over the extended break in December, and at this point, we're not really equipped to allow that to happen, due to our supervision, as well as some insurance stipulations, but we're going to explore further if that could potentially be an, an opportunity for our, our community to use our facilities. But that's also complicated. But these are things that we discussed, and finally, which got cut short, Josh was showing the board our new website, and one of the features of that website, and it's up right now, and we've, he showed different aspects of it, but one thing I do want to make sure we come back and talk about, is that you'll see that there is a social media tab on the right-hand side, a Facebook tab. And we actually, we don't have any friends yet, but we created a district Facebook page that we would like to launch with our new website. And I had Josh just do an analysis of the districts in our area, of who has and has not used this as a way to communicate with their constituents, and Josh, do you want to just share what you found out?
So, every district in Westchester County, except for Rye City and Chapewa, have Facebook pages. So, so...
And you better talk to Eric.
Already done. But the, the, it means that, so, public-facing, district-sanctioned web, Facebook pages that the districts monitor, and we looked at all of them, that are posting pictures and posting news items, and are linked from their district webpage, is what that means. That was the analysis that I had done.
So...
Who posts on that?
So, I mean, it's going to vary, right? Some of it's going to be public information officers, some of it's superintendent of schools, it really depends on the district.
So, you, you had discussed linking every post on Facebook back to the website?
Correct.
So, for people who are not on Facebook, they can still get all those posts by going onto our website?
Correct. And on the website has a Facebook post, so it will have all of the posts populating from Facebook onto our website.
But not vice versa?
But not vice versa, correct.
Which comes first?
Which comes first, the Facebook post or the website post?
So, in this box on our website that populates from our Facebook page, a post that is put onto Facebook will go onto our website.
That's what I'm asking. You said, which goes first, the Facebook, which do you post? Let's say we have a piece of information we'd like to post. Do we post it on the website first or the Facebook first?
Those are, so, I would, my suggestion would be that you would post it on the website first, and then you would post it onto Facebook, which would then backtrack it into this Facebook column on our website.
So it'll be on the website in two ways.
But these are apples and oranges. There may be things you post on the, on Facebook that you wouldn't think of posting on the website, because Facebook can be for, you know, small, you know, small moments in a classroom, you know, small things.
Well, that's exactly what I think we shouldn't post on Facebook, based on Policy 5095.
Right, about releases for kids.
That was only an example. I mean, it could be anything. The teacher, a teacher won such and such award today, or, you know, there could be some minor, minor events that might not be worthy of the website that get posted on Facebook. So then I asked, so we had sent out our survey today, and we wanted to just do a simple snapshot again of how our community is receiving information. So Josh, did you just want to share a little bit what we received? And again, with these surveys, we're at 175. Normally, we probably wouldn't have more responses than this, because if you're going to take the survey, you're going to take it initially when you open the email, you're not going to go back to it.
Right.
We found, Josh, you want to just describe what we found?
Yeah. So we asked, how often do you access the following digital platforms? We noticed that here, we had 73% access the district website about once a month. We're 73 people, this is an N, 57 about once a week, 21 about once a day, five more than once a day, and then 19 never. Whereas 59 of these respondents, you can see sort of a little stratification here, access Facebook more than once a day, another 24 once a day, and then less than that. We did find, which to me, this was interesting, that a lot do not utilize Twitter and a lot do not utilize Instagram from here. So this were respondents from here. And then, what methods do you prefer to receive digital information from the district? Email was still the highest, these were checkboxes, it wasn't a one. And then we saw about 20% preferring via Facebook. And then here, this was 36% say the district and school website.
So what, this is what we'd like to do. With the launch of our website, we'd like to also launch a Facebook page. Now, I spoke to legal counsel because the concern around Facebook, other than privacy rights of students, which we have a process where we know, the same as posting on the website, whose parents do not want their children on social media, because we have this opt-out process that other districts have. And what we'd like to do is just set the norm that we won't have comments underneath our posts. Because as long as we don't pick and choose which comments are or are not going to be there, we're on solid ground. So we would just put a little blurb underneath any post that, if you have any comments, please direct it to the, to this, to X person. We'll put an email address there, and this will be very consistent with it. And then we can evaluate how, where we are after a month, and to see if it is a, is a good resource for us to help reach out to a segment of our population, since most of our families are using this as a, as a source, as an information source.
Right, it's an information tool, that's, if it starts with the comments, that's problematic.
Right. I mean, we can't, I mean, right now, we have a point four person that we have not filled out of the district office, and we're pulling the list from civil service, the job title list, to see if we can leverage that person to help coordinate pieces of our community outreach through social media. So I'll be talking about that with you in the future. But I think that this would be a different way for us to share information with the community using a system that they have embedded in their everyday lives. So, and for those, we're not, I don't want people to feel like they need to be on Facebook to get our information. So important information, as we are doing now, will continue to be placed on our website. We'll just have two mediums to share information. We also have a district Twitter account that we will have linked here. Josh, you have that up there.
Thank you.
There it is. So we're all tweeting, the administrators are all on Twitter. And even though we don't have many followers, I think we still want to try to use this as a way to share not only what's happening in our school, but one of the benefits of Twitter is it allows us to push out educational research. So I don't want to give up on this as a way to, to share important academic research with our community. So we are, we will continue to try to use Twitter and maybe encourage our community to use Twitter now that we're going to be using this as a way to interact with each other and other members of the academic community. So this was just another, another piece of social media that we've been all experimenting with. But none of this is really out there publicly. We were waiting for that one moment where we relaunched the website to share this with our families. So-
So I think a lot of academic groups are on Twitter, as you say. So I think for that reason, it's good to, to, you know, move that along as well. I think it's a great idea. I think that so many people are on Facebook, that it's a way to meet people where they are and to improve communication. You know, we've heard that loud and clear that we need to improve communication with the community. You know, it's not that we don't communicate, it's that people are not receiving the communications adequately. Sometimes we talk about things at board meetings, but that's really not, not good enough. So I, I think that it's an important step.
So the, one of the, I'm sorry, Becky, I thought you were-
Yeah, no, that's, go ahead.
So the other piece of this, and we will continue to tape our board meetings, but we need to come up with a, we need to, in the future, make a decision as to whether or not we are going to post these meetings to be ADA compliant. Josh has been researching different ways for us to make our recordings meet the new regulations that come into effect in January, but we're just not in a place yet where we can, we have determined how to move forward, because there is an expense associated with it. So just, I just want everyone to understand that at our next meeting in January, we will be taping it, but we may not have a plan to post that just yet, because we cannot post anything that does not meet these new guidelines. But we'll talk about that a little bit more in January.
It's such a, it's such a conundrum that you have, you're going to basically eliminate, in some cases transparency, by trying to be compliant, like it, it, it-
They'd rather have nothing than have part of it, which is insane.
Right, but I mean, that's, it's just frustrating. So I understand that it's all good, like the intention is all good, but it could have a chilling effect on transparency.
Are there any recommendations or resources that we can use?
Well, I mean, we have, we found a way to convert our videos, but it's $15,000 right now. So we're trying to see if there's a-
Per video?
Per video?
No.
No, for the-
Process?
That would be for the platform, and then per meeting, there will be a fee for the transcription.
What are other districts doing?
Wait, a person-
What are other districts doing?
So in our tech directors' meeting, when we had this conversation, many districts, our plan is not to post videos online until they comply to cost-
It's a terrible shame, that's a shame.
What does an ADA compliant video do?
There needs to be a full transcription of the video with the members who are speaking, so that there's distinct, so our conversation right now-
Would have to be transcribed verbatim.
Would have to be transcribed verbatim versus what I said versus what you had said.
So we are thinking that as the pressure mounts to become compliant, we may have more opportunities presented to us that may not cost as much money. So I'm hoping in January, we come back to you and say, listen, we have found a way to be able to do this that's reasonable. Right now, I'm not sure $15,000 plus a fee is reasonable. But we will, but we will come back to you in January. And I just wanted to alert you that we do have a little bit of an issue here. Not a bad doing, of course. And I just wanted to thank Josh and his team. There's a lot of work to be done on that website between now and the 19th, but it will get done.
It's really exciting, thank you.
And he's done a great job at overseeing this process for the district. And I also want to thank David for helping us and the administrators get online to start trying social media as a way to interact with our families.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
Yeah, can I comment?
Mm-hmm.
All right, I think, I'd like to know what we're planning on putting on Facebook.
So things that I envision us putting on there would be maybe announcements. So I sent an email out today about this meeting. I probably would have posted that on Facebook, too. I have taken snippets of kids at different activities. So if a field hockey team won a championship, I might post that online, if all the students on there are able to be posted online. I've posted pictures from concerts on my Twitter account. I would probably post that on Facebook. The way that I've angled those pictures, because I don't know who has and has not opted out of being posted online. I've done it in a way that you can't distinguish who the children are. If there's a musical, like The Sound of Music is this weekend, we would post that on Facebook, and hopefully people would share it to get that information out. So those are just a few examples of things that we would place on there.
Okay, I just reread Policy 5095. And does not, even if you don't opt out, it does not give us the right to post on social media of people's pictures. I think you should check with our attorneys on that, very closely, we should change the policy. And I think the part of the regulations that follow the Policy 5095, if you read the disclosure that we send to parents, I think it's at the beginning of the year, I think we should also disclose that there's a chance, you know, when they make the decision whether to opt out or not, that there's a chance that their child would be posted on Facebook as well. Two, Facebook is a for-profit private company, it's a private website. We are giving our data to somebody to monetize, where I thought we weren't supposed to be using district assets for public, for for-profit organizations. So essentially, we're giving them their data so that they can sell advertisements. We're giving them our data. And I think that we ought to look into that legally, too. Because we sit here, we won't let a for-profit company come on our thing and use our gym, or use whatever, or use our classrooms, when we're sitting here essentially giving away a district asset. Now, our data is clearly a district asset, and they are monetizing it. And I think we ought to check with counsel before we do that. And I think that, and if Josh, you know, is supportive on this, I think that all information should go on our website first, even if it's an instantaneous process, you know, automatic process. But technically, it should go on our website first. Lastly, in terms of the comments, I don't know how Facebook works, because I'm not on Facebook. But I don't, but it's my understanding that we can't block comments automatically. And that we can't, I don't know if, Josh, if you're able to find out if you could write a script that would delete comments on a automatic base, semi-automatic basis, or near-time basis.
Right, and I haven't, the quick research that I've done between yesterday and today was that their API doesn't allow access to do that as of right now, if there's some other way.
So what's going to happen, is that certain comments, depending on the time of day and who's looking at it, will last, will be posted for longer periods, up to hours, I assume. I mean, people like me who are up at 2:00 in the morning and post a comment, if I were, they'll be up there until, I don't know what time, the first person is able to take down a comment. And I don't know what the burden is on the person whose job it is to take down comments, how often they have to look to do it, and whatnot. So you end up with a situation where you have both positive and negative comments standing for different periods of time and for any period of time, which is not what we're trying to do.
Well, Jeff, I mean, our stuff is on the website, right? So it's out there in the public domain as it is. So if somebody wanted to sweep our website or take an RSS feed of our, feed of our website, that information is out there for anybody to sell us advertising. We get emails all the time as board members from vendors trying to sell us stuff. So I don't, I don't-
Nobody has a right to take our data and monetize it in that way by just taking every piece of our data and mirroring it. You can't, that's not legal.
But it's already out there.
It is out there. That's why I think it should be on our, and that's exactly my point. Put it on our website, and anybody can find it.
I, I'm concerned about the comments, and I, you know, I brought that up to you when we first met. I think it is incumbent upon this community, the police itself, and to not comment, especially when you've put it out there, that this is a way of getting out important information to, like you said, meet people where they already are, to improve communication, which has been, you know, a mantra here. But that we don't want people posting now. We can't stop it, but, you know, maybe it's worth a try.
When we, when you looked around to see, like, that other, every other district that's using it, what, do you know what they're doing with their comment?
So it varies. Most districts have comment policies that are posted in the About section of the page. So, that are in there. So about civility, and about profanity, and about utilizing individual names. So they vary in length from there. Facebook does have the ability where we can disallow, they have levels of disallowing certain types of comments. So if there is profanity, they can scan for that. We can add certain words and phrases that comments then will not be allowed to be entered with those words and phrases on it. We just can't blanket, say, delete all comments and turn that feature off. So-
How many words can we put into the system?
I have not tried to max it out, but it looks like a large box.
The dictionary?
Yeah, I don't, I don't believe it's the dictionary. I'm sure that it's, you know, a handful of things that are in there that fit into their box. But I can try that.
I understand the issue about the comments, but I, I feel it would be detrimental for us not to do this at this point. So I'm in support of working out the glitches.
Try it for a month and then come back and see where we are in February.
I think, you know, I think that, I think that graphic with what people are checking once a day, I think it's an important way to get out information. And I think that we should iron out the, iron out the issue with the comments, but I think it's critical in getting information to our community in as many platforms as we can.
Do we need to change the policy before we do this? Because if you're going to post a picture, you need to change the policy. If you're going to monetize, somebody's going to monetize it. I think we should check with our lawyers.
I think Christine's saying that.
For the record, I have no problem if you want to post-
I think Christine's saying that she's making sure that you can-
You know, it's a meeting tomorrow, too, on Facebook. Go ahead, lock yourself out.
I'm not, I'm not-
Here's Policy 5095, it's like, it's on a new page, it's up already.
I'm not really worried about our policies. I think that's a red hair, and we can easily change our policies to fit the-
Right, we have to change the policy. But I'm saying, before you do it, change the policy. I think we should resend out the opt-out. And I think that should be an opt-in, but that's a whole other issue.
It says website, it says online.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't read the policy. We will take a close look at the policy, see if it is being violated. We'll have our lawyers look at it, and if we need to change it, we'll change it.
Online and printed media, right?
Yeah, I didn't, I don't know, Jeff, what section, because I reviewed this, so I'm not really sure what section you're talking about that would prohibit us from posting pictures of students on Facebook, provided we have done the opt-out provision, which we've already completed this year. But I do think you're-
Talks about district websites and school websites. That's not Facebook.
If it's linked in with our website, it's part of it.
So it gives, the district has the authority to approve the social media platforms. So I would say that Facebook would be our social media platform since it's our page that we're using, and we have control over that particular page.
So Christine, here's a quick question.
You can just change the words.
But I'm going to see Mark tomorrow, so I can talk to him. I really don't think it's an issue.
I'd like to say something?
Yeah. Change the policy.
You used this in your previous district, right?
Yeah.
And how did that work?
It went great. We set up the norms a little bit differently, because our community wasn't as litigious as Chapewa can be. So we allowed certain comments and other comments that weren't, that were more of a critical nature, we redirected to the appropriate personnel and didn't allow those to be posted on our site. But here, I think it's, and that was the best way for us to communicate with our community all the good things that were happening in our district. Here, I just think it's better to be consistent and just not to allow any comments. And just as long as we set up that norm and people become used to that norm, I found in my previous district that we didn't have to have issues surrounding concerns regarding the comments, because there was an expectation. So we just have to set the expectation for the community of how our site's going to operate.
Okay.
Thank you for doing this work.
Thank you, Josh.
I appreciate you doing it.
Thank you, Josh.
Always a work in progress. So there's only two other things I wanted to mention. I wanted to mention that two highlights in our December newsletter will be our Hour of Code that was cosponsored by the district and our PTA. It was an excellent- It was an excellent evening at Seven Bridges last week on Friday. We actually had the creator of Watson do the keynote, and then kids went off into their classrooms and coded with various professionals. So, it was a great night. And then this week, we've been celebrating Inclusion Week. And our PTA's done a lot of work with our kids and our administration and our faculty to really highlight and, and support our students and celebrate each other, our, what we have in common, as well as what makes us unique. So, it's been great to see all the different happenings, K through 12 in this district. That's all I have for my superintendent's report.
Okay, thank you, Christine. We will move on now to committee reports. We have a policy committee second reading of a public participation at board meetings policy. So, we can talk about the changes that we've made, but just for people who are just tuning into this, we've added a public participation policy. Again, you know, we want to provide opportunities for open dialogue. We want to encourage participation. We want to conduct our public business openly with civility. We want to provide a welcoming environment where diverse views can be expressed. So, to that end, the one thing we've added here in the first paragraph is that the audience is asked to refrain from clapping, cheering, booing, or making commentary to those people who are making public comment. And, you know, the reason for that is, you know, in addition to civility, that people may feel uncomfortable coming to the, to the microphone if they feel that they have a minority view. So, we do want to encourage everyone to come forward with, with all comments. And I know that that happened last year. People said, oh, I wanted to say this, but I was afraid, or I was embarrassed. So, I heard that, so, so we added that. Just in general, we are going to enforce our three-minute rule, which we've had on the agenda, but we never really observed it. We'll have our district clerk time the three minutes. I just want to say, we didn't do that with the public comment after the interactive report, because it was interactive. You know, they were answering, and it was unusual for our district to have had this kind of event after a lot of trauma. So, I thought that it was appropriate to make an exception. And that just points out to the fact that we are flexible. So, we will have one comment period where speakers can comment on agenda items or other school-related subjects.
We don't say one, it will be a public comment.
There will be public comment. We got rid of the one part.
Right, it gives you. The doctor worked out tonight, on the fly. To now have.
She had multiple comments.
Yes, 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 correct, thank you for that. Let's see, we will not allow comments, any comments that would be the subject of executive session. So, for instance, comments on employee performance, comments on individual students, whether good or bad. So, in the past, we certainly have had comments complimenting teachers. Unfortunately, we can't allow that if we're not going to allow comments complaining about teachers. So, we have to be content neutral. So, we will not be allowing comments related to individuals or any other matters that would be the subject of executive sessions. Speakers cannot use a public comment to self-promote market or advertise their business. We will not have ongoing dialogue between board members and speakers. But we will be able to, we will answer easily answered questions. Of course, people always have the opportunity to email us or contact the superintendent or administrators. We request civility. And the board president will be responsible for the orderly conduct and enforcing the provisions of this policy. So, I just want to say that this is a second reading we have here, provision for adoption. I would like to suggest that we have a third reading for the following reasons. I spoke to a community member today, and I don't think, you know, this was not posted on the website. So, I'm not sure about how many people know of this policy. It is a change to how we conduct board business with the public. So, I would suggest putting a draft of this on the website, you know, between now and then.
Is it really a change, Vicki? We've always said we had three minutes, all we're doing is formalizing it.
Yeah, it, it is a change, because we are going to behave differently. We are going to, to enforce it, and I think that's a significant change.
Have you spoken about this about five meetings?
And we, we have, but it, but it was not posted on the website.
Is our pol, are policy drafts normally posted on the website?
I don't think it's been consistent. I mean, this should have been posted with backup comments, but I don't think it, I don't think it was.
Just in a backup?
No. So, it was not, so what my, what I'm suggesting is that we are almost upon the holiday break. And by the time we come back in January, you know, not much, you know, not much board business will have elapsed. I, I don't think it's a whole lot of time to wait necessarily until we adopt this policy.
So, we'd adopt it at the next meeting?
That's what I'm suggesting.
I would like to, I mean, if, if we're gonna do that, I'd like to do it at the beginning of the meeting so that we can have it in place for the meeting. I mean, it's like we've been doing this, kind of tiptoeing around enforcing the rules and having rules and being.
Right.
We're halfway through the year, and, you know, I'd like to.
We've read that we were doing this.
Right, and we'll be talking about this at our retreat. I mean, this is something that like, it seems like we're wasting half a year to try and get to doing what we wanted to do and thought we needed to do. So, if we could, you know, talk about it at the very beginning of the meeting, and then vote on it out of order, then, you know, I, but I just, you know, I don't want to have, I'm not gonna wait till the end of January to.
Well, it would be in the committee reports, which are before public comment. So, we would then pass the policy and then have the public comment.
Can I ask a few questions about the thing in general, and specifically, the policy itself? I'll ask that one second. It does not contemplate or address a situation where somebody wants to come, speaks for three minutes, three more speakers speak, and then they come up again, which essentially either gives them six minutes, where we've given them tacit approval to wait until everybody's spoken again. And that, do we want to address that? Or do we want to leave it vague and have that become an issue?
Limited to three minutes.
It says speakers are limited to three minutes per speaker.
Right.
Not per time.
That doesn't mean per time of the mic. I think it's actually spelled out appropriately.
So that, so I can do one minute now, and then come back and do another minute later, and then come back and do another minute.
You know what? You can legislate almost every breathing moment. And so, it just becomes a question of what makes sense to us.
Right, that's what I'm asking, what makes sense to us? Should we legislate?
So, I think part of it is being flexible. We have someone who wants to come back and speak again. You know, I, I don't know, I think just by default that we would allow that.
Good, I'll come off with it.
I'm not sure, is that what you were, what you were implying by your comment? I just want to make sure we're all on the same page.
I mean, it says, it, it does say three minutes per speaker. I mean, I think we do, we want to have some discretion. I thought Jeff was commenting on if there's someone that keeps then, you know, making the rows, at which point you could say, this is disruptive of the meeting, which the board president has discretion to do. So, I, I feel like it's covered. And I'm willing to allow for discretion there. I'm fine with that.
So, we're okay with somebody coming up again?
Yeah, but then again, that's part of the, part of the discretion.
Of whether it's disruptive to the meeting.
Yes.
And that's determined by the president?
That's correct.
And then the last bullet point.
I'm not, sorry, can I just add on to what Jeff's saying? So, what, what you could, what in theory could happen is you could have someone come up and speak for three minutes. No one else could come up, and then they could speak again for three more minutes. That's, that's what could happen. Or you could have someone come up for three minutes, you could sit down, someone else, then they could come up again for three minutes. And they could come, so I think what Jeff's trying to illustrate could be problematic for us. So, we may want to just think about it and come back to it at the third meeting.
And I'm not saying we have to make a decision now, but I think that it's something that should be addressed. I agree that we can sit here and write a twenty-page paper and address every possible contingency. I think this is a very likely contingency. It's happened at almost every meeting we've had, or many meetings we've had. And I think it's something that should be addressed, either yes or no. So, you could say speakers are limited three minutes per speaker per meeting? Whatever you want to say, but let's think about that.
We can clarify that, certainly.
Yeah, but, you know, we might not all agree on that.
Right, we don't all agree on a lot of stuff that we passed.
Right.
It's alright.
I have just seen that happen before, and it gets a little contentious. So, I think it's a good point for Jeff to raise that we need to think about.
Is there a best practices with that? What, what have you seen what other districts do?
They've limited to one.
One session.
One, they limited it, it in the way that Warren had described.
One time up to three minutes.
Per meeting, or per public comment session.
Three minutes per person per meeting. It could be three one-minute sessions if you want to go up in.
No.
But I, I see.
And you gotta keep a running tab with how many seconds we spend.
We can reword that section a little bit. If we're going to, if we're going to vote on it, we can put suggestions into, to tweak that wording to avoid that problem.
Yep. Okay, lastly, maybe it's condant, ending?
Padant?
Yes, whatever, that's what I'm saying. I, I totally appreciate the last bullet point. And the fact that the president shall be responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and the enforcement of the provisions of this policy, and therefore, may, okay, cut off a speaker who does not conduct themselves. After hearing from two lawyers, I now clearly understand the difference between may and shall. I still believe that, that the discretion is not in enforcing the rule. The discretion is determining if the orderly, if the conduct is, if the response, if the speaker is acting in a responsible manner, or orderly manner, or whatever it says. And I think that the may should be, it should be, I think the president should have discretion to determine if the person is acting, is following the rest of the policy. But if the president determines that they're not, that they shall, or must, or should enforce the policy. I don't think that you should not enforce the policy if you think the person is not being.
You're not saying, she's not gonna say that she's gonna enforce it, but she's gonna cut off a speaker. So, she can, here she can, or they don't have to, it's, you know.
Right, they don't, but, but the decision to cut off the speaker or not is not on a whim. It's on whether or not we're being, following the previous eight bullet points, on whether or not they're following the policy. And that's where the president has to use their discretion, and their good judgment, and their whatever, to make that decision. But once that decision has been made, that they are not in compliance, then the president is, is responsible for, for the.
Can I, can I shed light on this, may perhaps? I feel that you're turning what is a, a, a discretionary act that has one part, and you're making it two parts. I think, in my opinion, it is not that, like, for example, if Vicki is the president, and Vicki, it's not that Vicki is making a decision whether it's, you know, whether it's improper or not, and then deciding whether to cut the person off. It's a one decision, is it time to cut this person off based on what's going on? So, the point is.
I agree with that. That's why I say the may should be at the point.
But it's all her discretion. The thing is, Vicki, the board president's discretion is basically to decide whether to cut that person off. It's not a two-part decision. It's, it's all wrapped into one. It's not a two-part decision.
We don't take a vote as to whether this is disruptive.
Whether she's thought it's disruptive and decided not to cut the person off. She's deciding based on the circumstances whether the conversation needs to end. It's, it's kind of a, a one single decision that is her discretion, if that makes sense to you.
I, I understand what you're saying, but I do believe it's actually a two-part decision. It has to be, that, that, you can't decide to cut somebody off without already determining that the person is being disordered.
It's simultaneous, is what I'm trying to say. And the thing is, when you give someone a discretionary power, Vicki has a discretion to cut someone off. I don't think it should be written in the language that she must cut someone off. It's as almost if you're trying to inject in her discretion.
No, I'm saying that she must cut somebody off. If she's used her discretion, that the person is acting contrary to the policy.
But the effect of the language is the same.
I, I mean, I'm not a lawyer, but I don't necessarily agree with that.
So, you know.
I think we all want the same goal here.
Right, so what, what?
You know, yeah.
If we're gonna discuss this in another meeting, we can think about it and.
Jeff, it could all, yeah, it could also say, you know, if you want to change it, that, that this can be reworded to get rid of that problem, if you find it that way. That, that she has discretion to, you know, she's responsible for the orderly conduct of the meeting and has discretion to cut off a speaker who she believes is not conducting his or herself. It's her discretion.
No, wait, that's not what I'm saying. I'm saying she has discretion to determine who's not conducting themselves, and then she cuts the person off if that person's not.
Okay, I, I think, I, to me, I think this. I think at a certain point, we'll vote on this and move on.
I am not willing to change the language, because I think it covers what you're saying. I understand that you want, you know, you're looking at it in two parts. But you don't have to get into the permutations and details of, of our thinking, you know, in a policy. This accomplishes the discretionary function of enforcing the provisions. And, and like I told you, when you, when you use shall, shall is really a matter for objective measures, such as three minutes has passed, whereas the may is appropriate where.
I told you, I understood that clearly.
Something is subjective.
I think we should move on, and we will decide what is.
I think that, I think that, I think that, I'm not a lawyer, so maybe it does say what you guys are saying. And it says, and it's all good. But I think the object of policy is for the community to understand what we're saying. And that's where I don't think this is clear.
I think it is.
So, I think that it could be rewritten to keep on saying what you guys think it says, and to keep on saying what I would like it to say, and I think it's the same thing. But I think it's not clear to somebody who's not an attorney, that what you're reading there. And I will make my best effort to provide a possible solution. How's that?
My opinion is that what you would like to write would add to the confusion.
Right, so let me, let me write it, and then if you, if you think it does that, then you reject it.
Fair enough. So, we are agreed to have a third meeting?
Yes, we are.
Okay, good.
And can I ask, here's what I was gonna ask at the beginning. Could I, could I ask that when we get a policy draft like this, that we have a red line version of it, as opposed to something? I, I don't even know, and I think Jane asked the questions. Highlights mean a red line, is that?
We bolded the new language.
Okay, all right.
Right, but we can make it red next time.
Red, but red line, you know, where you see what's crossed out?
So, can I, I just, I'm going to go back to Margot to try to add some language about that three-minute and the potential of a repetitive speaker. And then Jeff, you'll draft some kind of language about the one area that you guys are still talking about.
I will provide some sort of language, whether I draft it or I have somebody draft it.
Someone will, you will send that to me. Okay, I just want to make sure I know what I'm working with Margot on to get it back to you by the next meeting. So, okay, sounds good.
Any other reports from other committees? Well, communication, we had a meeting, Jeff and I, with Christine and Josh to review exactly what was shown here, which was the website and the use of Facebook and Twitter. It was the same presentation that, that we got a chance to look at and comment on. We had that meeting, audit the.
Oh, actually, I would like to mention something about our wellness committee meeting, which was held on Monday. And there was a discussion about recess in the elementary schools, recess before or after lunch. Now, given that I'm just on this committee this year, I know there was a study done prior, John, in terms of the benefits of having recess and then lunch, which has been, what's been going on at West Orchard. Jim Scoop instituted that, and there was discussion. And I believe there was a survey, which again was before I was on this committee, that, that really showed that that was beneficial, and there was talk of that being a district-wide standard. So, I'm trying to figure out, because what Jim was discussing at the, the meeting was that this was talked about at Roy Brook and Graflin, and they were choosing not to flip it for, for a number of reasons that we were trying to get more information about. It wasn't completely delineated. But it seems to me something positive. And even if there is a decision, I, you know, that the other schools don't want that, I, I think perhaps it should be examined why we don't have a universal policy for the lunch recess situation.
They did have it at West Orchard.
West Orchard?
No, what, West Orchard does recess before lunch.
My son actually advocated for this years and years ago, and Eric did try it. And they had all the research about how they would be calmer afterwards and all that, you know, that'd be hungrier and sit for lunch, all that stuff. So they, they did try it. I don't know what the result was, but I know scheduling is the tricky part.
I know it's scheduling, but I guess for me personally, I'm trying to understand why it can work scheduling at one elementary school and then on another. And I just think it's an opportunity to see, to talk about consistency.
Okay.
So, so what we'll do at the next wellness committee is we'll invite all three principals to come talk.
Is the wellness committee making a recommendation here? I don't understand.
No, actually, there was a study, and so two schools tried it out. One was West Orchard, one was Roy Brook. And Grafflin did it. And West Orchard, somehow they were able to work, work out a schedule. And so it's still being done, except for the kindergarteners. And then at Roy Brook, it didn't work out. So they are having lunch first and then recess.
Although it seems to be working out quite well at West Orchard.
Because, because there are, there are issues, because you, when you go out to play, when all the kids come back, this entire grade, they come back, there's only one bathroom. One bathroom for boys, one bathroom for girls. And you cannot all wash hands. And so we put, wipe it, we have sanitizer, but, you know, all depends how dirty you get, right?
At what time is lunch?
Well, all depends, they stack.
That's why they, they can't all do the same thing. You know, if one has lunch earlier, then maybe the kids aren't hungry.
I think they all have different lunch periods.
If one has one later, maybe the kids are too hungry to go out and play, they want to eat. So it depends on.
But every school has the same stagger.
Why is the goal to have everybody have the same playtime?
This is a building principal decision.
Yep. Yeah, why is the goal the same, have everything the same?
Well, I, I just don't know if that's an issue which I, I think has been brought up over the years about consistency. So when, it's just making a determination whether that's important, and people think that we should be consistent. And, and look at that in terms of consistency among the schools.
It sounds to me like the, the lunch times and recess times aren't consistent. So.
Just the order is.
No.
Just the order.
Oh, I thought you said they were having those.
No, just the order is not, no, they are.
Okay.
I just wanted to bring it up because.
Yes.
Interesting.
So we'll have the principals attend the next wellness meeting to discuss this with the committee. And then we'll report back at the next board meeting.
Okay, any other committee, I'm sorry, is that?
No, that was it, I just thought of checking that.
Any, any other committee reports?
The facilities committee has two things to report. Right? One is, we're gonna have a meeting with the rec commission committee, or rec commission, or whatever they are. And two, we got a.
I'm still waiting to hear back.
Right, well, at, at some point we will. We don't have a schedule yet. And then two, we got a report from other, from our engineers about the Geary property, or the Zattero property as it's commonly known, that we believe will have met all sorts of other conditions and made a few changes to the plan based on some engineering studies on, on the, um, septic.
The location, yeah.
Drainage and septic, and then we'll be able to go back in front of the planning board in February.
In February. That's the plan.
Great. Long process.
You know, it's actually been six years.
I think it's tough before you guys out.
I've lasted it.
Okay, thank you. So we're now at the public comment period. Anyone who wishes to make a comment, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself.
Can you comment about the change to the public comment policy?
Three minutes.
Not yet.
First thing, I do have a couple of questions about the three-minute rule. I understand why you want to implement that. But I would like to know, is that three minutes per topic? Because you sometimes discuss many different topics, and myself as an individual may have questions about the different topics. So does that mean you get three minutes for the whole meeting or three minutes per topic?
That's a good question.
Good question.
You're not supposed to address individual board members.
Adjust the board, the board question. What is, what we expect is to have three minutes per person?
Um. I do find that disappointing. I'll get to that in a minute, because I'd also like you to define, what do you mean by dialogue?
This.
Okay.
What we're doing now.
This is why I find it very disappointing. This is the only opportunity a member of the public has to address the school board and to have a conversation and a dialogue. And Jane, you campaigned on improving communication and transparency. To me, this is a big step backwards if you're going to implement this policy.
That's why I mentioned recorded our work sessions before, transparency.
But, no, but as a member, there's no other time, a member of the public can come up and address the school board in total. So.
Judy, it's actually not, it just.
I know it's not required, but.
It's not the only time that you have an opportunity to discuss it with the board. Part of this was trying to be equitable and fair, that each community member gets the same amount of time up at the microphone, and also to understand that the board makes itself available to discuss or talk about any matters. But the problem that, or at least an issue that I found was, and all of us had talked about in terms of timing, was being equitable with each person and the fact that the board meetings are actually work sessions and are not supposed to be dialogues back and forth, which is a difficult concept. But the problem is people are not, we're not trying to cut anybody off. We are trying to run an orderly board meeting and be equitable for each person that has a comment.
I support three minutes per topic.
Well, that's, how do you define topic then, right?
Well, you have, you have topics on your, your agenda items.
Right.
But you do have, but getting back to dialogue, there, I'm sorry, I don't know of another time that you can attend a meeting. I could talk to an individual school board member, but it's not the same as addressing the issue with all five of you at the same time. This is the only opportunity a community member has to do that. I respect the time issue very much, I understand that. I think there's ways that meetings could be more efficiently. But on the other hand, you're taking away an opportunity from the public to have a dialogue with the school board and maybe with some of the administrators also. So I just think that, you know, to me, this is a step backwards. And I, I do think, I, I, I understand from the difficulty, especially at some of the meetings last year. But I do believe that this is, it's disappointing that this is the direction, that you are now going to limit, I view this as a limit to communication. So thank you.
Thank you, Judy.
Judy, send me through the email.
Okay, anyone else with a comment or question? No? Okay, yes. Please state your name.
Hi, I'm Danielle Fleming. I actually teach at Roy Brook first grade, but live in Connecticut. I wanted to comment on the athlete who wanted to play varsity sports because my children go to school here. And I feel like as a teacher here and a parent, we, we want our children to excel academically, but we should also consider the student athlete as well. And I feel like a student athlete who has a higher skill level, just like a re, a reader who reads like, Jason said, someone who reads at a fifth grade level and third grade, you wouldn't hold them back. I wouldn't hold a student in my class back if they excel in reading or math. I would provide them with a need to improve on those skills. And I feel like the same thing should be true for the student athlete. If I have a student athlete, which I do, she'll be in seventh grade next year, so that's why. When I saw this on the agenda, I figured I better get in there. I feel like Chappaqua gives her so many wonderful academic experiences, they should also provide her with an amazing athletic experience. If she's not given that opportunity to play up to the level that she can, then I feel like we're failing her in that way. And I know her teachers would never do that, so I don't think that her coaches would want to do that either. So I don't know who that student is, I don't know anything about that situation. I just felt, as a parent of a student who I feel would pass all of the tests, I looked them up on New York State Education, she could pass them today, never mind next year. And I just feel like, you know, she, somebody made a great point that, you know, you'll lose great athletes to this school district. And they'll go to club teams, and she plays on a club team. And she, or she would say that I don't want to go to school in Chappaqua, I want to go to school in Danley, where they're gonna let me play to my potential. If I hold her back, she won't excel. And I just wanted to, you know, speak up for whoever that athlete is, and just in general, because I know you had said you guys would talk about it more and look into it more. So I just wanted to say that I would appreciate it also, and I know a lot of other athletes and families would appreciate that you continue the conversation and really seriously consider it. Thank you.
Okay, thank, thank you very much for the feedback. We will, we will definitely consider all of the feedback we get and, and all of the points that are being made, both pro and con, and we're remaining flexible and open to, to the possibility. I'm not saying we will change, but we are definitely flexible and listening and learning. So thank you very much for your, your perspective.
Thank you very much.
Speakers have to be, can teachers speak in these? I mean, I don't mean that. In the future, I thought it said that they couldn't.
We have not addressed that.
We can't limit who can speak. If we open comment, anyone can speak.
Yes. Okay, any, any further comments from the public? No? Okay, so we will move on, oh, I'm sorry.
But they have to follow the rules of.
Yeah, 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 anybody else, I just, I just, I thought it worked for me.
Okay, approval of minutes, I move item three point one and three point two.
I second. I, I second item three point one, three point two.
I stand corrected. The motions are to accept the minutes, not approve.
As amended by Jane. Didn't Jane make a suggestion?
I, I don't think.
Well, I think it was amended, or it was supposed to be. They were, yes.
Okay.
That one changed, yes.
So the motions are to accept the minutes as amended.
I second the minutes as amended.
Seconded. Any, any further comments? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, instructional recommendations on personnel.
Recommend four point one instructional?
I will move item four point one, instructional personnel.
I second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
I recommend four point two non-instructional.
I move four point two.
I will second four point two. Questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have a motion to accept item five point one, C S and summaries reported to the board today, December sixth, twenty seventeen.
I move item five point one.
I second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
You have a motion to approve item five point two, which is the contract with Bedford School District for the sale program for the twenty seventeen eighteen school year.
I move item five point two.
I second.
Any, any questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion to approve five point three, a consent judgment, as stated on the agenda.
I move five point three.
I second. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Let's see, are we, hold on, five point four, this is on me.
Uh, no, this is mine.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve item five point four? This is an award letter for middle school projects from K G and D, as stated on the agenda.
I move five point four.
May I have a second? I, I will second. Any questions or comments on this item? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve item five point five, which is a very generous gift from the Friends of Greeley Theater. Lumber to be used for building a set and supplies and tools for set decoration.
I move item five point five.
I second.
Any, any questions?
Uh, yeah, first, thank you very much for the generous gift. But second, where does all this, I think we've had this happen, where does all the lumber go eventually? I think we need Joe.
Goes into the dumpster that we all go back and pay for.
The lumber, we, we keep whatever ones that we can reuse and the rest, we get a dumpster and throw it out.
And he's, he's satisfied with the arrangement?
Yes.
Okay.
The potifier is not happening.
No. All in favor, please say aye.
Alright, alright.
Motion to approve item five point six, which is a generous gift from the Chappaqua School Foundation in the, the form of their Insta-grant project. And it's a gift for Club Comfort, which is a program that brings in a comfort dog for a day, I think to teach the, to teach kids about empathy. Do you may have a motion?
I so moved.
And a second? I second. Any questions?
I have a concern about bringing animals back into the school again.
It's against the policy.
So I, we check with our insurance. They are comfortable with us doing, allowing Belda have this program.
We do have a policy against it.
Certain parameters. This has been in place before in this district. So, I, I mean.
We just need, then we need to address the policy. And, and, because I know we have a policy that animals are not allowed.
You know, the, the P T A used to have a program in elementary schools where we brought in animals. Program, I don't know if that still exists. Those were the good old days, Haley.
Our policy does allow for educational purposes.
We brought in all kinds of animals, we brought in raptors, the raptor program.
So.
Ranger Rick.
Just. Right, but that used to be part of the school, just during the school day.
So part of the review of this grant, after it went through the foundation, was that John worked with our insurance within the parameters of our policy to determine if we would be able to support this program. And as long as we met certain criteria, the policy allows for it, as does the insurance company.
And there's no kids with allergies that would not be able to participate?
Martin has worked through all of those issues.
Okay.
So I feel comfortable with this. We did, we did do a hard look at this prior to placing it on the agenda.
Okay, all in favor of approving the gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve item five point seven, which is to determine, resolve that items on the attached list are no longer useful or necessary, and we will, and will be deemed surplus items.
I move item five point seven. I second item five point seven.
Questions?
Options are announced.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We have a motion to approve item five point eight. This is a contract with Asset Works Provider.
I move item five point eight.
I'll second.
John, can you please remind me what this contract, or Christine, or whichever.
This is, this is the software, I'm sorry.
Oh, the software.
No, go ahead, John, this is from your office.
This is the software that we use to track our assets.
That's right, okay.
So there's an annual fee.
Yes. Any, any other questions?
We scan all of our assets, ever you?
No, no, no. But we had to keep update and delete. When we, for example, when we have five point seven, we, we obsolete those assets, they had to be taken out. So there is a database and we had to pay for that.
And how often do we scan all our, according?
We don't, we haven't done it district-wide, just that we just.
When we buy something, it goes in our thing and then we look for it at the end?
Well, we, every year, our assets manager, which is Mike, Mike Trinick, he will actually, you know, we have a procedure that he will select a group randomly, and then he'll go check to make sure they're there.
So there is, there is a physical count on occasion?
Yes. But it's random, not individually count every single one.
Random statistical say.
All in favor of item five point eight, please say aye.
Aye.
I'd like to take all the financial reports together. Items six point one through six point four, treasurers, claim auditors, revenue status, and the appropriation status reports.
I move items six point one, two, three, and four.
May I have a second?
I will second item, um, six point one through six point four.
Any questions or comments on any of these reports? No? Okay. John, anything of note that you would like to let us know? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
A notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, January tenth, at seven thirty P M here at the Academic Commons. A notice of future meetings, our next meeting will be Wednesday, January tenth, at seven thirty P M here at the Academic Commons, we will be having the budget preview at that time, and we will be looking at, uh, we will be having a Roingbrook Elementary School report, a presentation, and we will have a facilities update by Joe Gramondo, and the facilities committee, I presume, as well.
Vicky, can I also share that, uh, we added a, a meeting for this Friday, this afternoon, at the Ed Center, at approximately one P M.
Okay, and the notice, uh.
It's on the website, correct?
Notice is on the website.
Exact session.
Exact. That would, that is for an exact session.
No, we have, no, we have an agenda for that meeting.
So, there will be a public portion for that meeting, and an exact session? Okay, so that, that is this Friday, December eighth, at one P M, and that will take place at the Ed Center.
And one other location that's posted on the website, because we have one of our board members who will be virtually attending.
Face timing.
Correct, okay, um, so at, at this time, I would like to.
I move, that we move over to the exec session at twenty three twelve.
I would like to take a motion to adjourn to the executive session to discuss, uh, matters of litigation. Any other matters under discussion? Okay. Jeffy has made the motion.
A second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We anticipate that we will return to the public board meeting for, just simply to adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, ladies, very much, thank you, so much.